Recording in progress.
Chair Abneder, we're ready to begin.
Thank you. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Planning Commission this Tuesday evening, July the 11th. I now call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ashley, could you please make the roll call?
Yes. Chair Abneder.
Present.
Vice Chair Patel. President Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Nugent.
Present.
And Commissioner Wiggins.
Present.
Excuse me. The conference ID for this meeting is 890-8955-1356. The passcode is 639847. Good evening and welcome to this meeting. We are excited to be here in person and with options for virtual participation. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for the public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Next on the agenda. Actually, do we want to invite anyone in the public to speak on items that are not on this agenda this evening?
Chair Abneder, we currently have two in-person speakers. And if there are any speakers via Zoom, please raise your hand now. Hey, it looks like we only have two in-person speakers right now, so the timer would be three minutes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Rigo Gallardo, you can come up to the microphone.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the San Mateo Planning Commission. My name is Rigo Gallardo. I am a rep for Carpenter's Local 217 in Foster City. I stand before you today to address a matter of utmost importance, the need for strong labor, for area labor standards in our community. It is crucial that we prioritize a livable wage, accessible healthcare, and a steadfast commitment to accredited apprenticeship programs. Moreover, it is time we put an end to unacceptable exploitation of our workers by developers who pay substandard wages. San Mateo is a vibrant and growing community, and its prosperity relies on the hard work and dedication of its residents. We must ensure that those who contribute to our city's progress are fairly compensated and treated with dignity. A livable wage is not a luxury. It is a fundamental right that allows individuals and families to meet their basic needs and thrive in our society. Healthcare is another critical aspect of supporting our workers. Access to affordable and comprehensive healthcare should not be a privilege reserved for the fortunate few. By advocating for healthcare provisions, we can guarantee the well-being of our workforce and safeguard their ability to contribute effectively to our community. Equally important is our commitment to accredited apprenticeship programs. These programs offer invaluable opportunities for skill development and career advancement by investing in local talent and providing them with quality training. We not only empower our workers, but also foster a robust and resilient local economy. Furthermore, we must address the issue of developers exploiting workers by paying them substandard wages. It is normally reprehensible and undermines the principles of fairness and justice that our community stands for. We cannot allow such practices to persist unchecked. It is imperative that we enact policies and regulations to protect our workers from exploitation and ensure that developers who enter our community adhere to fair labor practices. In conclusion, I implore the San Mateo Planning Commission to take divisive action in establishing area labor standards that encompass a livable wage, accessible healthcare, a commitment to accredited apprenticeship programs, and local hire. Let us send a clear message that we value the well-being of our workforce and will not tolerate the exploitation of our workers. Together, we can build a stronger, more equitable community for all. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Our last in-person speaker is Diane Whitaker. You can come up to the microphone.
Good evening, Chair Abneder, Vice Chair Patel, and the three other commissioners. I am Diane Whitaker, a 30-year resident of San Mateo. San Mateo is currently experiencing a dramatic growth in development. As residents, we feel overwhelmed by the number of large, boxy, tall, glass buildings proposed and constructed, all seemingly clones of one another. You, as planning commissioners, are the gatekeepers. You have the power to affect the future physical environment of our beloved city. If something does not feel appropriate, say something. Ask for changes. Make it a negotiation. Challenge the property owners, developers, architects, and engineers to do better. This city deserves it. A letter was sent to the Planning Commission on June 21st of this year regarding this topic. I have since had the opportunity to speak to a few of you on the commission about this letter. My ask for you tonight is this: At the end of tonight's agenda, under reports and announcements, please ask staff to put the contents of this letter on a future Planning Commission agenda so that this can be discussed in an open meeting. The public would like to hear your thoughts as you discuss the future look of our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Abneder, we have no more public commenters.
We'll close the public comment period and move on to item number one.
Item number one, Block 21 Mixed Use Project, Tentative Parcel Map and Associated Planning Applications Extension Request, PA 2023-15.
We will start with a staff presentation, followed by applicant presentation, clarifying questions from the commission, and public comments. The applicant will be given up to 15 minutes to present, and members of the public are given two to three minutes to speak, depending on the number of speakers. The applicant may also be given five minutes at the end to respond to the public comments. Once the public hearing is closed, the commission will deliberate and render a decision. Finally, if a decision is made tonight, the decision of the Planning Commission can be appealed to the City Council within 10 calendar days. Rendell, do you have the presentation, please?
Yes, Chair Abneder. Good evening, Chair Abneder, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Rendell Bustos, Senior Planner, providing the staff presentation for a tentative parcel map extension request for the Block 21 Mixed Use Project, PA 2023-015. So just starting with the background behind the applicant's request this evening. Starting with the location, the Block 21 site is located on the block bound by East Third Avenue, South Delaware Street, East Fourth Avenue, and South Claremont Street. The site has a parcel area of just over one and a half acres and has a general plan land use designation of downtown Rich Hill Core Support, which is consistent with its zoning designation of CBD/ S. So this is an aerial showing the site conditions from when the project was originally approved, which shows that the site was occupied by several structures of various building uses, sizes, and footprints. And so this slide shows an aerial of the site as of May of this year that staff received from the applicant. Did want to know if the applicant was issued demolition permits in February of this year, which is prior to the issuance of the main building permit for new construction, as that permit is in review. This demolition was authorized to allow the applicant to conduct soil testing beneath the buildings where they stood to evaluate soil contamination from prior uses, which included a gas station and a dry cleaning business. The soil testing has been completed, and a related Phase II report is in progress. So a little bit on the project description, the approved project description. The Block 21 project is a six-story mixed-use building consisting of about 180,000 square feet of office uses, 111 residential uses on the upper three floors. The building has a combined area of approximately 268,000 square feet. The City Council approved this project in June of last year, of 2022, with entitlements for a site plan and architectural review, tentative parcel map, which would merge the existing 11 parcels into one parcel, as well as a site development plan application for tree removals. So the item being considered this evening is a two-year extension request of the project's tentative parcel map, as well as an extension of the associated planning entitlements. And so if approved, this would extend the tentative parcel map and planning approvals expiration to June 20, 2026. So shown here is the legal framework, where I just wanted to highlight some key points. So the first is the subdivision code, which allows up to three two-year extension requests. And so this is the first and only extension request related to this project. In addition, the zoning code lists three findings for approval, which are listed here, which are that the project must still be consistent with the general plan, be consistent with the zoning code, and that the site must be in substantially the same condition as originally approved. And so as was noted in the staff report, the project does remain consistent with the general plan and the zoning code, but that there were physical changes to the site due to necessary soil testing. So with regard to public input on the request, staff did receive a zoning administrator-level public notice in May of 2023 of this year. And in response, staff received about 15 public comment letters in opposition due to concerns over the possible project delay, the vacant appearance of the site, and the vacant use of the site. So given the public input, staff has elevated this request to the Planning Commission this evening. And so public noticing for this evening's meeting included a second postcard mailing, as well as an email to all of the public commenters that sent in comments. Since release of the Planning Commission notice, staff received one public comment regarding the effect of denying the extension request. So in response to the public comments received, particularly during the zoning administrator's notice, the applicant provided the city a letter clarifying the purpose behind their extension requests. The applicant is present this evening and will be able to elaborate more on these points. But the letter explains that the extension request is being made due to lender requirements to ensure that the entitlements remain active for the duration of construction. There would be no changes to the project and no changes to the overall construction timeline as a result of the request. And secondly, I wanted to conclude with the project's current permit review status. So the main building permit, which is listed here for new construction, was submitted in September of last year and is pending a resubmital by the applicant. In addition, the final map was submitted in January of 2023 and was resubmitted this month, in July of 2023. And lastly, soil testing occurred in May of this year, and again, the results are being put into the applicant's Phase II report. So with that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to approve a two-year extension request of the tentative parcel map and associated planning application approvals for the Block 21 project. This includes staff's presentation, the applicant is present this evening, and will be making some remarks to the commission. Happy to take any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Rendell. Any clarifying questions for staff before we go to the applicant presentation?
Yeah, I have a question or two. Can you explain what, just to, I zero in on terminology sometimes, and what exactly does a Phase II report mean? That's a soils report, I guess?
A Phase II report looks at the, more specifically, the results of the soil borings or the samples. Typically, a Phase II report is needed when there's questionable soil conditions. So in this case, the soil conditions were questionable due to potential contaminants from a prior gas station and prior dry cleaner. So the Phase II report would disclose those impacts and convey any mediation that's required.
So the phase maybe has something more to do with the, like, possibility of contamination and not to do with the structural integrity of the soil for structural engineering purposes?
Correct. The soil testing was more so related to the potential contaminants and not on the soil stability for structural design.
Okay. I do have other questions. I don't know if they're really clarifying questions. I guess my main other question, which I think is, you've touched on, but what does this do to the overall schedule? And maybe there'll be more information about that, but it, like, the report and what you've said is that it won't affect the construction schedule? So what is the purpose of the extension?
Yes, staff would look to the applicant. So perhaps if the applicant is present, they could speak to that. But the extension that's being requested tonight is a two-year extension to extend the entitlements, their planning approvals, and the map to 2026.
Okay, so hopefully we'll get more explanation about that with regards to just overall schedule, project schedule and construction schedule.
Yes, the applicant should be able to speak to that.
Staff or applicant?
The applicant.
Yeah, okay, great. Thanks. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Seema? Martin?
Through the chair, a couple of questions for staff. The, I think it's the zoning code that has three findings: consistency with the general plan, consistency with zoning, and then site in substantially the same condition. I know I'm paraphrasing. On that last one, do you have any insight as to when that section of the code was added, sort of what they mean by condition? Did they mean physical, environmental, anything? I don't know if you have any insight.
So through the chair, I don't have an exact date as to when the specific provisions related to extension requests were added. Perhaps if others on the dais are aware, they could chime in. But I think it's staff's interpretation on that last finding about the environment being the same. I think it is twofold. It's the physical look of the site, as well as, you know, any change due to SEQA that would affect any SEQA findings. Probably others add in if there's a different take on that.
So the exact wording in that finding, and I think this is partially up, why we have brought this before the commission, is that the project site and its environs are in substantially the same condition as when the project was originally approved. So we don't necessarily have specific guidance as to exactly how to apply it, and obviously substantial does provide some flexibility in how you want to interpret it. But I think overall, these provisions are in effect. I mean, the first two are relatively straightforward. We don't want to extend a project if the legislative or legal framework has changed, either in the general plan or the zoning code. And then here, we're looking at, are there other conditions that have changed or other factors that you want to consider as to why or why not this project should be granted an extension?
Thank you. Two more, through the chair, I think. Just to that point on the consistency with the general plan, these entitlements would otherwise expire in June of '24. Can you remind me if the general plan update is targeted to be complete before June of '24?
We are looking at a general plan adoption target in the first quarter of '24, so sometime in the first few months. There would also be a contingency of going back to the voters, depending on the final version of the general plan. So it could be then, or it might, portions of the land use element might be delayed. So, but we could say sometime in '24, we are anticipating an updated general plan.
Okay, thank you. And one last question. If a request for an extension is denied, can the applicant keep asking, just to sort of ask once, or you could, do you know if you're allowed to sort of keep asking if it's denied?
Through the chair, the zoning, the subdivision code does have a provision of the applicant being allowed to request up to three two-year extension requests. I don't know that it specifically has that provision on the basis that these requests might get denied. The findings are pretty perfunctory and are usually approved at the staff level. I think it allows multiple requests in the event they need to extend it further due to changing economic conditions or et cetera. But not sure if others want to add to that.
And I think there is also the provision that an action taken by the Planning Commission can be appealed to the City Council.
Yeah. Okay. Those are all my clarifying questions. Thank you.
Through the chair, I've got some questions that are basically follow-ups for the other commissioners. So I just wanted to clarify something that Commissioner Williams had asked. So the soil testing that occurred, is that still classified as a geotechnical investigation? Or is that some other type of soil test? I'm a little uncertain.
The soil testing, again, is more related to, like, contaminants or hazardous waste analysis from a gas station and the prior use of a dry cleaner business. I mean, less so for, like, soil stability or that kind of analysis.
Okay. Thank you. And then the next question has to do with how this proceeding would go in terms of our ability to make determinations. So we, as a body, may not be able to make the three findings of the San Mateo Municipal Code, Section 27.08.087. Most notably, we might determine finding C is not able to be made due to the substantial change that occurred with the demolition of the entire site earlier this year. Are we legally able to grant an extension without making the three findings outlined in the municipal code?
Mazharine Bukhari, Assistant to the Attorney. The zoning code is quite clear that it's the project site and its environs are in substantially the same condition as when the project was initially approved. So if the Planning Commission were to find that the converse is true, that either the project site or the environs are not in substantially the same condition as when the project was initially approved, then you wouldn't be able to meet that prong. And all three of the prongs, the general plan, the zoning, and this last condition are required to make that finding.
Okay.
And to extend, and to adopt the resolution as stated.
So just for clarity, so in order to even grant the extension, we would have to determine that the project site and its environs are in substantially the same condition as when the project was originally approved? Is that what you were saying?
Yes.
Okay. And if we don't do that, if we can't do that, we can't provide, we can't grant an extension?
The zoning code is clear that all three prongs have to be met. So if you, as a body, are not able to meet that, to make that third finding, it seems like then you could not grant the extension.
Okay. And then the other question is a question that I had submitted earlier to you. I just want to get it out there. So can we, as a city, legally include conditions of approving this extension request? Does this process allow, say, such negotiations or anything?
I think the better approach is not to create new conditions, but to use, if the Planning Commission is concerned about, you know, the look of the vacant lot right now, and I don't mean vacant as in how it relates to our code, I mean, the open lot right now, there is a section in the municipal code regarding landscaping, fencing, screening that would go into effect if the lot were to stay open and there was no pre-construction activities. There's tools in the municipal code to address those concerns, and there's also possible code enforcement, you know, actions the C could take if there were ever violations of conditions of approval. But I don't think it's legally defensible at this time to create new conditions because the project has already been approved.
Okay, so you say it wouldn't be legally defensible to create new conditions?
Most likely not.
Okay.
Through the chair, just if I can add on to that. I think part of the consideration should look at the totality of the code and how a lot can be treated during this transition as it's being redeveloped. And then some of this decision might also depend on how the applicant weighs in and perhaps the timeline to get the project done, because in any urban context, you are going to see redevelopment transitions. And so I think the word substantial does provide some latitude if that, combined with the other provisions in the code, can, I'd say, connect the dots into where this is still going forward with, because there will be substantial change as a result of this project. And so I think some of it is understanding the timeline as part of the original approval and how this extension might change that, or what factors might be at play. So I think that would be a fair consideration when you look at this term substantially the same as when the project was originally approved.
Thank you.
I have a question about that item number three. So like, I guess I'm trying to understand what the purpose of that is. What is the, what are they, what are we trying to achieve by requiring that? Is it that there is no, that they haven't proceeded? I mean, they couldn't have proceeded. I guess I don't quite get that. It's, it's a, is it making the assumption that the building permit has not been issued, which it hasn't in this case? Is, can anyone answer that?
Yeah, I think through the chair, at first read, you know, there is a part of it that is sort of gets at the environmental, like, the environment of the project. And so, you know, when this project And so, you know, when this project did move forward through adoption, we had adopted a mitigated negative declaration that looks at the project's impacts, the environment. So I think what this finding is also getting at, in addition to the changes to the site, is that are there changes to the environment that affected our environmental analysis that would then affect our decision in extending the approval? So in the, I do want to note that in the resolution, staff did make positive findings, you know, to recommend approval on the basis that, yes, the site has changed in that buildings were demolished, but they were demolished due to necessary soil testing. And that with regard to sort of environmental, the environmental effects of the project, those are unchanged, and that there's been no changes to the roadway, the shape of the site, et cetera. So, yeah, I think that's sort of staff's, you know, initial take at that.
Is that it for questions for staff for now? I do have a couple myself. You know, maybe this is a question slash comment. Was it ever discussed when the demo permit was issued that there could be some unintended consequences of not being able to use all the city's codes and avenues for an extension? Do, was that ever brought up? Because I would think that if you extend a demo permit, that that implicitly implies, without written notification, that you still have the legal rights for an extension.
Yeah, through the chair, I think the applicant may be able to chime in on that as well up again when they come to the dais. But I don't think the demolition permit by staff was issued knowing that there would be an extension request made.
Right.
Nor does having a demolition permit in hand prevent an extension request be made.
All right. So I see there's a slight difference in the staff verbiage of how we are looking at this project. And in the staff report, it says to consider a resolution for a two-year extension, yet on the, the report that you showed on the screen, it says to recommend it. So there's a fine difference there. And is it, is it, is it staff's? Is it now a recommendation, or are you just asking us to consider a resolution?
Through the chair, the recommendation being sought by staff is to approve the extension request on the basis of the analysis made in the resolution, which, again, makes positive findings to approve the project. The staff report used the word "consider" basically in order to prompt some discussion about the final finding, number three, regarding the environment.
Okay. And also, in the report, it says that the permit drawings were submitted, I think, in September of 2022, and they are now waiting to be re-submitted. Obviously, that means they've been sent back to the applicant with comments.
Yes, that's correct. The applicant has submitted one set of plans for one cycle in September, and the city issued comments. And so the applicant is due for a resubmital for that plan check.
Great.
Sorry, through the chair, can you state when the comments were provided to the applicant?
I'd have to double check, but typically, our turnaround time is about a month or a month and a half. So they would have received that comment letter probably in October, but I can double check.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, your excellent questions triggered me to ask one more of staff, if I may.
Absolutely.
One and a half questions, Rendell. Is it, is it fair to say that demo permits are usually issued with construction permits and not before?
Through the chair, we, the city issues a lot of permits, certainly with larger projects. That's where I've seen it more commonly, that we issue demo permits in advance of the main building permit. That's for various reasons. Again, the reason for this one was specific to soil testing for contamination. We've have, we've other projects such as Peninsula Heights, where that demolition permit was issued in advance of the main permit for a different reason, for soil stability. And then there was the 303 Baldwin project, where, again, a demolition permit was issued in advance. None of them were as visible in that the extension requests became, you know, relevant for the planning or brought forward to the planning commission. But certainly, we have, the building official is authorized to, you know, issue a demolition permit in advance of the main permit based on a series of findings.
Okay, thank you. I'll, that's it for me, I promise.
We good?
Yes.
Can we please have the presentation from the application, from the applicant?
It was not too much of a presentation. I think Rendell covered most of the points very, very well. I'll just, you know, touch on a few things. A Phase II report for this site included over 80 individual borings. So what we have to do is we have to classify all one and a half acres as type of soil, whether it needs to go to a standard dump or hazardous waste facility. All three sites that we've constructed on in this area have hazardous waste. And so before we can even apply for an excavation permit from the city, we have to classify these soils. And we have to arrange for a soils management plan and a construction plan with San Mateo Water Quality Control. So that's who oversees the environmental remediation of these sites and the underlying groundwater that's also impacted by a former dry cleaner that was on this site. In addition to that, there were underground USTs, underground storage tanks on the site that we were unable to remove from the site to test around them to see if they've leaked into the groundwater because we couldn't excavate with buildings so close to the excavation point. There was concern that the building would slide into the hole if we started to dig. And so we couldn't, so it's a little bit of an awkward situation for us because we can't provide the material we need to provide in order to get an excavation permit and in order to get a SMP, soils management plan from Regional Water Quality Control. And yet, we're now in a position where we can't extend our entitlements because we were moving quickly to try and develop the site. So I think what we found on criteria three, in our opinion, that is directly linked to SEQA. That is not, I, you know, changed the paint color, that is not I tore the buildings down. That is, did I do something that changed the SEQA analysis? The answer clearly is no. However, we did tear the buildings down so that we could do the environmental work, so that we could remove the USTs, so that we could test underneath the USTs and determine the impact of groundwater, so that we could then put together remediation plan that we could submit not only to the city, but also to the Regional Quality Control Board. Typically, for a building of this scale and size, it would take 10 months to do the construction drawings at a cost of close to $3 million. We started the construction drawings because this is, because I'm crazy. We always try and build these buildings quickly. And so we started them before approval, aspects of them. We went what's called at-risk in developer vernacular and started the drawings early so that we could submit three months after approval. I promise you, there is no project that the city has ever seen of this scale that has submitted construction drawings within three months of approval. Hasn't happened. So we were trying to be proactive so that we could start excavation before what we knew would be the following winter. Thank goodness, we didn't do it this way, because it would have been a disaster with how much rain we got. But I digress. So we submitted those drawings. So from the time you saw me in June, I have spent $4.5 million on this site. Construction drawings, demolition, regional water quality agreements, on and on and on. We have submitted drawings to the city, complete drawings, this thick, not what we get when we do a planning package, right? Real, physical drawings for a very significant structure with subterranean parking, office, and apartments. All of those three things are totally different beasts and are very complex. And so it is, it is expected that city staff would take the necessary time to review a very complex set of documents. And they have, and they provided us comments back. And we have resubmitted, and we'll continue to do that back and forth until we're satisfied that the documents are in a place where everyone feels comfortable that the structure is going to be built properly. So we can't do the next permit without this environmental work. We can't do the environmental work with the buildings there. Anecdotally, the letters you received on this project were in response to an article that contained in the paper, that contained some misleading statements. And I've since spoke to many of the people who wrote you letters. And there's a reason they haven't written you a second letter. And it's because people saw the word "delay," and they thought of what's happened around the corner. And I went to, I said, "We aren't those guys. We aren't those guys. We've built three buildings in the community in the last few years. That's not who we are." What we're trying, so there's no delay in the project as far as it's gone to this date. The drawings are continuing to progress through the normal process that they've always progressed under. And I think that, my feeling is that staff saw the community input, said, "Okay, rather than make these findings ourselves, we're going to make you do it." And your question was fabulous. "Well, if you didn't make the findings, how can we?" That's a great question. But I think the real purpose we're here tonight is because of the public outcry, that people felt very uncomfortable with things that were said in that article. And I've since talked to many of those people and helped them see our perspective and kind of what's happened. So let me see if there's anything else that I took notes on. I will say, anecdotally, we were, it was a very tenuous circumstance with those buildings existing there. It was a huge public safety concern for us. The police were dispatched multiple times a week. So from the time it was approved in July, most, you know, the tenants, we gave them the freedom to move whenever they wanted to. Because the minute they found a new place to go, we wanted them to be able to take advantage of it. So some moved out right away, and some moved out a few weeks later, some moved out a few months later. You know, we didn't anticipate a demolishing of the buildings for quite some time. But we gave them that freedom. Once they moved out, we had to secure the site. We couldn't keep the site secure. And so it was a dangerous situation to have boarded up buildings with people entering those buildings. We had fires started on the site. Those aren't the reasons we demolished the buildings, but I think it's worth noting that right now, the site is clean. We've sprayed a organic glue over the dirt so that in windy conditions, the dirt won't blow. We've taken all the fabric out of the fence because people kept spray painting it. And so we've tried to do our best to keep the site as presentable as possible as we go through this process of, you know, reimagining this part of the downtown. And there's nothing that we've done that hasn't been at full pace to get to where we all want to be, which is a completed building. So that's all the comments I have.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have questions for the applicant?
Through the chair. Thank you, Mr. Fields. The lender, I think we're here because you're asking for an extension.
That's right.
And if I understand, that's something that your lender has asked for.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
You, I guess you could have just waited until, like, we just saw a project where their, their period was, you know, their approvals were about to run out, so they came and asked for more time. But you're asking for it a year in advance. I guess I'm asking a couple of questions, but I'm just trying to understand maybe the mechanics of why this is needed by the lender. I don't want to ask anything that's, that is, can't, but I just want to understand. It's a little atypical, so.
Yeah, so we're trying to close a loan. And lenders don't think the same way I do. They think, what happens if Mike Field and his compatriots get hit by a bus tomorrow? What is our, what is our collateral for this loan? Well, our collateral is the land, but it's also the entitlements. Because they're lending us a higher value than the land would be worth unentitled to them, if that makes sense. So, so the reason we're asking for it now is so that we can close the loan and build a building. If I don't get the extension and I can't close the loan, my entitlements expire and I can't build a building. So to go back to the question, do I wish I had never demolished this site? Absolutely. But I don't know how else I could have done it. Because I couldn't have done the environmental document that the city and the, and the regional board require without demolition. It's, it was a very dense site. The other sites, we haven't had that same problem because we had enough parking lot area, and we were able to do diagonal borings and things like that. This site had so many buildings on it, especially in the places where we needed to do the most boring, that it was impossible to do. But that's the answer to your question. The market is very different than it was a year ago. Lenders are much more nervous than they've been in probably a decade. And so there are more stringent requirements that they're asking of us in order to consider moving forward with us.
Thanks. Quick follow-ups. So you're trying to close the construction loan?
That's correct.
Okay.
So we, we have been told that, you know, we will not be able to get a construction loan without this extension. So that's where it's at.
And then the, so you sort of, from the entitlements perspective, I think I'm saying this correctly, anyone, please interrupt me if I'm not, you have until June of 24 to get the construction permits. The lender's looking beyond just pulling the construction permits. Is that fair?
What the lender's looking at is if something happens to me, they don't want to pay the city $10 million to pull a construction permit so the entitlements don't expire. Okay? That's not the business that they're in. And so they want as much runway as possible on these entitlements so that if they ever took this land back from me, because I default on the loan, that they can then go sell that land to another developer so that they can get their collateral repaid. That's how lenders think. That's what they're doing.
I'm going to ask one more question that you may not have the answer for.
And it's more valuable with the entitlements. I mean.
When I go to borrow money to build a building, if I, if I don't have the right to build that building, and you've lent me money to build the building, well, what do you have as the lender?
Right.
Right? You have a piece of dirt that you've lented too much on because there's no right to construct the building.
Sorry, so yeah, I think I was under the impression that, once you pull the building permit, which you have until June of 24 to do, once that's pulled, sort of the status of the entitlement doesn't matter.
Correct.
Anymore.
That's correct.
So they, you pull a permit before June 24, it doesn't matter whether the entitlements expire in '24 or '26?
That's right.
Or at least that's what I thought.
Well, well, no, it doesn't, it, they're looking through the term of their loan. It's a 32-month construction period. So what they're trying to do, we don't have the right to ask you for four-year extension or a three-year extension. We have a right to ask you for a two-year extension. They've made it clear that that is the runway that they need to feel comfortable, that they'll be able to re, that, that if I get hit by a bus, they will be able to recover their collateral.
Okay. That's, I've gotten to the bottom of it. Thank you. Last question, just in your own mind, if things go well, when would you think you'd start excavating for the basement? I'm assuming that's kind of the first real step.
Well, yes. Mass excavation is the most impactful step on the community. And so typically, we would like to start mass excavation by September or earlier so that we're not in the middle of wintertime. I don't know if we're going to be able to hit that date. This process has delayed us. This process has delayed us. We did not anticipate this, but we're here for it. And we would like to be able to start this building as quickly as possible. And so does that mean we wait through, you know, there's, there are certain months in the city where we can't excavate, where we can't run trucks. And so we have to look at those restrictions and figure out the best time to execute on the mass excavation. It'll be 80 trucks a day. It's, it's a massive excavation project. It's, uh, so we have to be deliberate, otherwise it'll be so impactful that no one will ever want to talk to me again. So we really have to be deliberate about it. And so I think the dates are mid-November through, through December. And so, so if we can't get it going by then, then we have to go on the other side of those dates.
Uh, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Yeah, to the chair, I have a follow-on question just in terms of the construction. So from the time you begin excavation to the time that the foundation and.
The bottom of the hole.
Architecture is, yeah, the big hole is, is completed and, and, you know, the, the main erosion dangers are passed. What would that timeline look like?
So, so there's no erosion danger. Really, it's the impact of the trucks on the streets. So to mobilize a mass excavation, the first thing that we have to put in is wells. And so the whole site will be pumping and, and essentially pumps. They're going to start to pull the water table down on the site so we can excavate that dirt out. Because we can't excavate into the water table, we have to get, get the water out. It's a nine-month process to, uh, from the time I say go, to get the wells in, to start the excavation, get to the bottom of the hole. At the bottom of the hole, we typically treat the bottom to keep it dry. And then we start the foundation process. So that's typically, that's typically a nine-month process.
Okay, so based on that information, am I correct in, in assuming that this excavation is most likely to be done next year?
I would, I don't want you to hold me to that. But based upon where we're at today and the time and now, so what I now need to do is if I were to get an extension, I now have to go close a loan, which in this environment takes some time. And so we have lenders who are in the market and we have to go to them and say, look, we got an extension. And so it'll take a period of time to close that loan. If I can get that loan closed soon enough, it's possible I could start the excavation before. If I can't find a lender to close that loan soon enough, then it'll have to happen after the moratorium.
When does the moratorium lift?
November to December is when there's a moratorium. You may have the dates off the top of your head, but I don't.
I thought it was through January.
To the chair, it's, yeah, it's related to like a holiday moratorium.
Oh, okay.
Mostly during December, the month of December.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I thought, I thought a lot of jurisdictions had excavation moratoriums through the winter or in, into January or end, end of January, but maybe that's not necessary on this site.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to comply with the holiday or with the moratorium through a December. The site's big enough that, that we can clean trucks on site. You know, we can do things to, really what you're worried about in the wintertime is the mud going onto the roads. And so we would excavate the site strategically, start in areas where the trucks get the most expeditious way out. And then essentially, as we go down, we build ramps that the trucks drive up to then go out. But the real concern during the wintertime is obviously being able to pump the water down deep enough because it takes a fair amount of, when, when, like this winter, the water would be flowing into the site just as quick as you're pumping it out. Right? Because it was so much moisture this winter. The, the Third Avenue building was a very dry year. We, we had no problem excavating that site through the winter months. So it just depends. It's, it's a, I know that everyone's focused on the planning part of this process. The execution of the construction is what makes the difference. And trying not to ruin everybody's lives as we build a big building like this.
Any questions, Seema?
Yes, thank you, to the chair. I have one question. It's about the city's vacant lot maintenance code, which as the staff report notes, requires improvements such as perimeter landscaping and fencing should a site remain vacant for a period of more than 180 consecutive days. The staff report also says, should the applicant continue site investigations and other preparatory work for construction, it would not be considered a vacant lot for the purposes of the vacant lot maintenance code. So I'm curious, because in the applicant's letter to the city, it mentions that there is an active management contract for the site, including weeding, hydroseeding, garbage removal. And would those activities count as site investigations and other preparatory work for the purposes of the vacant lot maintenance code?
To the chair, I think it'd be helpful to get a more updated picture of what the applicant has been doing to the site and will be doing to the site. Just off the list that you've listed from the letter, you know, I think if those are related to the new construction or the development of the lot, then staff would believe so. The challenge is that the vacant lot maintenance code doesn't anticipate these scenarios and doesn't provide guidance on, you know, what constitutes development. So it's a bit of a judgment call on, on staff. But I think to get a better picture of what's going on and will be going on in the site, I think the applicant should speak to that.
So I have a vacant lot in the city, the former 76 gas station, which has a fence and is meeting these requirements. We have an active, there is a team of people working on these permits on the city's side and on our side, trying to advance the ball. This is not a vacant site. This is a site that is in the process of construction of a massive building, a massive construction project, I should say. And so I don't see it as a vacant site. When I drive by it, it looks like a vacant site. But if everybody knew all the work that is going in on a daily basis between staff, between us, between our consultant team, the, you know, bi-weekly phone calls with the whole consultant team, continuing to move the ball with the Regional Water Quality Control Board Agreement, which isn't done yet, all of these things have to happen for us to be able to do the, I mean, negotiating the, the contracts with the hazmat dump sites and making sure that, you know, we can, not all those sites can receive dirt right now. Finding the sites, do we have to drive, you know, where do we need to drive the dirt? All of that's active. So it, it's my belief that we should be perceived as an active project. And so, yes, are we at a phase in the project where it looks like nothing's happening? Yes. Is nothing happening? No.
Thank you. So I think what I'm hearing from Rendell is that the, the code is broad enough that there is some subjectivity to staff and potentially to Planning Commission to make a judgment call about whether or not we believe what is happening meets the criteria of a vacant lot.
Yeah, partially yes. And I think it's worth noting to the commission that the action that's being requested this evening is on an extension, not necessarily on whether this lot is vacant or not.
Right.
The code exists as it is and staff is comfortable making that determination. We do that regularly. And so, you know, we, to create a vacant lot, it effectively just requires a building permit to create new fencing and landscaping. And there are, there are some, you know, provisions on implementing that code and certain timelines the applicant would have to commit to. So I think, yeah, it's just worth reminding to the commission that, again, the request tonight is focused on an extension.
Great. And so just to reiterate what you said, staff can make that determination. That's not something you need us to do about whether it meets the guidelines of the vacant lot.
Through the chair, yeah, I think that's accurate. Again, the recommendation is focused on the extension and the vacant lot code exists and is implemented and that staff is authorized to enforce that.
Perfect. Thank you so much. That was my only question.
So, so Mike, has the lending practices changed and put you in a position which you had not anticipated? And since you were thoroughly aware of what was on that site, would the demolition always have been requested be done, be done prior to the, a building permit being approved?
Yes. So it, it would not have been possible for us to submit the documents necessary to get a building permit without demolishing the buildings first, given the constraints of the site. The lending environment is, it is a whole different world than it was a year ago. So yes, it's very different than, than we anticipated.
So meaning that a year ago, you may not have asked, have had to ask for an extension?
That's right. I, I, on the prior three buildings we built in downtown, we did not need an extension.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant at this time?
No.
Thank you, sir.
To the chair, if I may just follow up on one question from Commissioner Nugent, the, on the plan check. So the plans were submitted and filed with staff in September of 2022, but the actual physical plan checking didn't occur until November of 2022. And so we issued the letter in January of 2023. So the applicant received the letter on the main building permit in January.
Would we like to go to public comment at this time? Commissions are okay with that? We go to public comment?
Are there any?
Would we like to take the time to tell the people who had requested, if they're outside, it's their time?
Uh, yes, we did have two in-person speakers. It looks like they are outside right now, so Mary can go and notify them.
There's a lady here.
But if you're on Zoom and you want to speak, please raise your hand. I'm just going to give it a few minutes.
Thank you, Mary.
Chair of matter, we currently have five speakers, so the timer would be three minutes. We're going to start with the in-person commenter, Laura Feinstein. You can come up to the podium.
Hi there, good evening. My name is Laura Feinstein. I'm a resident of San Mateo. I live in the North Central District. I'll be honest, I actually came here to hear the transportation update and I stumbled into a fascinating discussion about this project downtown. I just had a couple of thoughts. One is that I think sometimes you don't hear from the people that aren't worried or aren't concerned. And I would say that I'm one of them. I live about a mile from this site. I bike past it several times a week. I eat at the Ices across the way and it's never bothered me, honestly, that it's vacant. It really never occurred to me that it was a problem. So I think, you know, it may be one of those things where there's probably hundreds of people that aren't concerned about the vacant status that, that didn't write letters and didn't, didn't show up to make comments. And overall, what I heard today was that approving this extension would allow the developer to move forward more quickly, to do the remediation, which is expensive and which I'm sure our city would benefit from. And then to put in new office space and new housing, which of course we sorely need. Speaking personally, I know my parents are trying to find a condo here in San Mateo and it's very difficult. So to me, overall, what I hear is that the city will get what it wants actually out of approving this extension and that it actually will help move things along faster. So I wanted to voice my support for going ahead and just simply moving this project along. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is via Zoom, Michael Weinauer. You can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, can you hear me? Oh, yeah, you can hear me. I hear the echo. Three minutes, wow. This is very different from city council. Good evening, planning commissioners. Wow, there's a lot to unpack here. So I'll try to be as concise as possible. This is a, this, this situation, honestly, I think will be like a case study in, in whatever school would talk about this because it's really this perfect, you know, by, which I mean awful storm of coincidences that has brought us to this point with this project. And I want to say just for starters that I, I'm a big supporter of Windy Hill and Mike Fields in that he's been a really good ally to the neighborhoods in terms of their past developments. He's been honest, he's been forthright, he's been open and he's been generous. The company's been generous in terms of what they've done for, for our neighborhood, ranging from bulb-outs to Sunnybury Elementary to speed signs, hallelujah on Fourth Avenue. Great stuff. But the, the neighborhood is, is, and I, and I say this from both living here for seven years and being on CNA and, and several recent meetings around development and a tour that we did around development, that people are very concerned, ranging from the Fremont Street Lot that, you know, has everybody going, great, they're going to leave a big hole in the ground, to the economic uncertainty and everything. So what I'm, what I think it would really help is, and you've already kind of addressed a lot of it, is understanding that, okay, if you give them this extension, are there any of the roadblocks in the way of the financing? Love to know that. Like, is it a green light? We're good to go? B, can we, can we waive that holiday exception? Because I, I imagine we probably can. And of all the things that residents have raised, and this comes from a guy who lives on Fourth, we, the, the concern about the trucks is like a, it's, it's background noise. So the concern about traffic and that you build a building, right? You build a building you said you were going to build? In terms of trust of this planning commission, I don't think it's any secret that I'm very concerned that you will try to play some games with builders remedy and, and, and something like that. So I would really like to see the developer on record giving us some assurances around that this project is going to go in there, barring something really substantial. And the next thing is the, all the downstream effects. You have projects on Block, Block 20, particularly Safari Kid and the existing residents and whatnot that are going to be severely impacted here. And right now they're in limbo. We could really use an update in terms of, hey, what's really going to happen there? What's your timeline? What are you going to do to mitigate their risk and their business risk going forward? So thank you very much.
Our next speaker via Zoom is David Light. David can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, yeah, when I first joined this, I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. When I first joined, I had a bunch of other questions, but now listening to this, really, I only have one question. I've lived on 614 South Fremont since 1985, so I'm really close to this site. And what I've heard this evening is that there was this chemically contaminated soil. It was underneath concrete. It was underneath concrete and asphalt and under, underneath a building, I guess, and now it's on the surface, but we've sprayed some material on top of that that should keep everything protected. And I guess my, my question at this point is, how long does that spray last that was put on it? How often does it have to be resprayed? And, you know, before we do this extension, can we make sure that the developer is going to keep spraying that soil so it doesn't start blowing around a few blocks to my house? Because it, it, you know, it doesn't sound very good that we have to find special dump sites for this soil and, and honestly, you know, whatever this thing that was sprayed on there, it's, it's apparently transparent because it just looks like dirt to me. So I guess, you know, could we, we're calling it a vacant lot and maintaining a vacant lot, but it sounds like it's more a, you know, a pile of contaminated soil, and how does, how is that going to be taken care of as we extend the timing on this whole thing? And really, that's all I want to say at this point.
Thank you for your comment.
Our next speaker via Zoom is George. George, you can go ahead and unmute.
Yeah, hi, this is George. I would just, I'd just like to say that I hope the planning commission does the right thing by this community and underserved, underprivileged, underrepresented community, and provide them with a decent space while this project is resolved. This might take more than two years, right? Your only first approval is two years. They can go six years, and then it might go on to another developer. This could be a Detroit City Lot for all we know, and that's what it looks like at the moment. There have been discussions amongst residents about a community park, a community garden. I think that that makes a lot of sense. It beautifies the property. It makes it useful while it sits vacant and, and fallow until it's redeveloped. So I hope the planning commission does the right thing. In terms of the planning commission doing the right thing, I'd also like to say that maybe you just have to do a little bit of legwork. There's a little bit of forensics you might do. The developer has represented all the things that his lender or lenders or potential lenders have told him. Call the lender. Ask them what is really required by that lender. Have them on record talking to a government official on what is required for them to lend for that property. Then you will really know what you need to do to make this project go forward. Right now, you're just depending on essentially hearsay. So I hope you do that for the community. Again, the community that is really not taken care of in this city. And finally, I, you know, I, I heard that this entire block had to be demolished because they had to do soil testing for contaminated soil because there were vessels underground that would, if they weren't excavated, would collapse the buildings next door. That was, that was essentially the logic that was presented just, just a few minutes ago for why this entire lot had to be excavated. Were there vessels under the entire, entire property or was it just under the Arco Station? If that was the case, why couldn't it just been a few underground backyard boreings and the, and the gas station excavated instead of all those restaurants that the local community had depended on, including Win Fat, which the developer, I would say at least as representatives, had said was, had transferred to the new Win Fat, which was a blatant falsification, were removed from that site. They could have been functioning for this community for the duration. So, and that, of course, gets to the whole question about neighborhood facilities and affordable neighborhood transitional retail and all those other things that everybody's ignoring for this community because they don't give a damn about the people that live here. But anyway, do the right thing, do a little bit of legwork, call the lenders, if there are such lenders, if there are any in the pipeline, and really find out what needs to be done and beautify this property at least while it sits fallow and doing nothing for the community.
Thank you, George.
Our last speaker is Olga. Olga, you can go ahead and unmute. Olga, you can speak into the microphone. Looks like we're done with our speakers.
Thank you, Ashley. We will close the public comment period, and I'd like to take a five-minute break before we go back, bring it back to the commissioners. Through the chair, do we want to offer the applicant a five-minute rebuttal at the end of public comment?
I think, the only thing I wanted to clarify is, is it really is a public safety. So we're not spraying the organic glue on the site to keep people from being contaminated. The contamination on the site is subsurface contamination, and the Phase 2 report that we extensively did outlines that. The dirt on the top of the site is not a danger to the general public and is not a public health hazard. The reason we spray that on there is so that on windy days, which every so often it's windy in San Mateo, the dirt doesn't blow into the neighborhoods and everywhere else because if you get the right kind of wind, the right kind of conditions, that can happen. So it's really just a, it, it's the responsible thing to do when you have a piece of dirt, is to make sure that it doesn't blow, you know? Because we chose to take the fabric off the fence, which would typically contain that, but we found another way to contain it while also getting rid of the graffiti. So that's why we did it that way. If, if the public is worried about public health, we could easily put the fabric back in the fence, which will continue to help contain anything, but it's, it's difficult to keep the graffiti off the fabric. That was really the only point that I wanted to speak to unless there's any other questions.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
So, do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant, or are we ready to start to discuss the recommendation?
I have no questions.
Okay. Randall, should we see the recommend, can we see the recommendation, please? Are there additional comments from the commissioners? Or are we ready to?
I, I have comments.
Perfect.
Yeah, I appreciate the staff and applicant's presentation. That was helpful to me because the packet didn't have as much information in, you know, in this kind of detail. So I just want to make a few comments and say that, you know, it's clear to me that this is a lender's requirement and not something that would normally be in our purview. It's a planning staff departmental issue typically, and this agreement explicitly allows for extensions, as we've seen, so, I mean, as we see in the documents. So that was kind of one point I wanted to make. With regards to all of the concerns of the public, I hear that and I, you know, I've been by the site to look at it and such, and I get it because, I just wanted to reiterate that construction is difficult and it's noisy and it's dirty and disruptive and, you know, a, a good contractor and a good, you know, developer will do their best to, you know, mitigate those difficulties for the community. And you've, you've addressed, you know, that in terms of, you know, the most difficult times of construction and the constraints in terms of moratoriums and, you know, there's, there's kind of a lot that you're working around. So I also always feel like it, you know, has to start out getting worse before it gets better, and hopefully we're at the point where it starts getting better now, I think. But I, I mean, I'm just reiterating some of the things that, that I, you know, heard, and so I understand it's not really classified as a vacant lot, and that because, you know, you had to take 80 samples, you couldn't really have done it safely with sort of half-d demolished buildings. So, you know, all of that makes sense to me. I also wanted to comment that, you know, explaining that you proceeded at risk with construction documents, in other words, at your financial, at the applicant or the developer's financial risk, not in general at risk, but at your financial risk, you proceeded with design and drawings and engineering so that you could move the project along as quickly as possible. So that, to me, shows a real commitment to, you know, I don't know if accelerated is the right word, but to keep the project moving. So, you know, those are, those are things that I, I think resonate with me and should resonate with the public and the neighbors that, you know, that you're committed to keeping the project moving. I'm not concerned about item three, although it was super confusing because the, the, I mean, it wasn't confusing, it just was super, there wasn't enough information for me. Like, the buildings have been demolished, so of course it was, you know, different than when, when the entitlements were approved. But now that that's been clarified, that it's really an environmental issue, I feel like that's, that item is not a concern, that that's acceptable. So given all those things, I just, I don't want to delay the project any further, and this extension allows the developer to proceed. So those were my, that's my kind of compilation of what I heard.
Thank you. Seema?
Thank you. Through the chair, I don't have much to add to that. I think that was really well said. Similarly, with that item three, I, I think that one was a little bit tricky. I agree that it seems to be mostly a reference to the environmental conditions. I was going through scenarios in my head, like, what if a developer starts construction and there's some sort of delay that makes something take longer and now they need an extension, but since they're halfway through construction, obviously the site is different than when the approvals were granted. Does that mean they couldn't get an extension to then finish the site?
Yeah, I couldn't figure that.
Like, some of, some of those scenarios, you know, start to not make sense. So I, I think I agree that it seems to be more of a environmental sequoia-related stipulation. So I, I don't have too much to add beyond to what you said. I hear also the requests from the community to be able to utilize that lot should there be a delay, but it sounds like there actually isn't delay, that there's a lot of stuff happening behind the scenes. And while a community garden and a community park could be a nice benefit, if there was nothing happening, it, it sounds like there's, there's active things happening and also with the soil contamination issues. I don't know if community garden is the right use. So, yeah, this seems pretty straightforward to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Martin?
Yes, through the chair. Thanks. Thanks to, to staff for trying to sort out these, these moving pieces. It is kind of a confluence of, of odd things. And, yeah, I think it's, it's tough to get a construction loan right now, so I don't envy So I don't envy that position where we're at, and I think it's a funny layering of pieces that's gotten us here. I was looking at the three findings and maybe doing the same thing as, as the other commissioners, sort of like reverse, you know, testing different situations to see if they would, they would make sense. And I'm left to believe, or I will say conclude from my own review of this and kind of looking at the context of the other, the other pieces about the general plan and the zoning. And so you're trying to make sure that if you're going to give some more time, that the project still makes sense. That's, that's kind of what I'm taking from it. And just because the site's been demoed doesn't mean it doesn't make sense anymore. It actually means you've taken a step towards getting the project done. So while I think, you know, I'm sure there's plenty of times when staff feels like more clarity and the codes and ordinances would be helpful, and this is probably one of them. I feel like I was able to make, make my way through it. On the other hand, I probably share anxiety that everyone has, that no one wants to see this as a bare site for many years to come. That's always a risk in development. I think it's a, it's a bigger challenge right now in, with the sort of macroeconomic conditions. So while I share that anxiety, I think what I've heard tonight is that there's a lot happening and I would concur with commissioners that this is not a project that's stalled and the site is, you know, lowercase v vacant, while, while all the other ducks get in a row, those, those ducks are moving, to use the analogy. So I don't, in the end, when I try to consider all of that, put all that together, I don't have any concern in making the findings. So that's it for me, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I live nearby this project and I walk near the site, near, almost daily. And my son goes to preschool kitty corner to it. So I, I do have concerns about the condition of the site. It is also my understanding that, and staff has made it clear, that we have no legal ability to force the developer to do anything beyond what has already been agreed upon when the project was approved previously. I also, you know, you know, I want to make sure that the project site is safe. I want to make sure that there is no wind erosion that would be hazardous to the neighborhood, my neighborhood. I also want to make sure that we don't have, we don't end up with a project that just sits there for five years as a vacant site. I don't think that that's the case. At least, it probably would be less likely if we approve this rather than, I mean, basically our options are to approve it or not to approve it. If we don't approve it, this project site will probably sit there for years, given the conditions of the market, and there would be nobody to care for it. I'm a landscape architect. I, I know how long it would take to construct a safe and usable temporary park, let alone design it. And by the time we would even get to breaking ground for such a thing, whether it's a dog park or a, or a community garden, the applicant would, or the developer would have already started construction. So at this point, I just want to make sure that the applicant, I'm sorry, the developer follows through with taking care of the site. I don't want anybody in my neighborhood or anyone in the city, including my son, to be affected by the site in any hazardous way. And I also understand that we really don't have, you know, any wiggle room in terms of what we can stipulate of the, of the developer. Do, has, you know, at the most base and, and like, basic interpretation of, of the finding C that the project site and its environments have, are insubstantially the same condition as when the project was originally approved, like, you could say that, no, it's different. However, I don't think that that's the intent of that finding. So I, you know, in this case, it seems that, you know, by making, by not making that finding, which, you know, could be argued either way, it would be beneficial to the city in, in any way, given our legal constraints. I'd be curious if any commissioners or staff have anything to counter on that. But it seems pretty clear that we don't have any, any way to, to require the developer to do anything other than what's already been included in our conditions of approval for the planning application. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. I want to thank staff and Randall for doing a fantastic job again. And the applicant's information was open and clear. I also want to address the neighborhood. It has been greatly impacted now for five to 10 years with a tremendous amount of construction. And that's got to be trying for the people who live adjacent and around all of these active construction sites. And I think Windy Hill has been a participant in quite a few of those and has helped to alleviate some of the pains as our city goes forward and grows in areas that are prime for moving our city forward with its general plan, housing element, and office spaces. So it can't be easy to consistently have to maneuver around and have the noise and disruption to live with. And I think the neighborhood has started to accept it and I have to give Windy Hill credit for being open with a tremendous amount of people who have expressed their concerns throughout the years. To me, you know, I've been in numerous situations where we did demo way before we got our permit, so it was just a logical process for a construction project. And what I would think that we might take out of this discussion this evening is to look at the item number three and see if we can get some clarification and guidelines that we could possibly avoid having to go through this exercise in projects that may fall into the same category. My biggest concern at this point is the timing of the lending process. We all know that, I think it's in 2025, there are $1.5 trillion worth of commercial loans that are going to be due, and that scares me. And I think that if Windy Hill is able to secure their loan in a timely manner, it will make all of us a lot more comfortable. I am in support of extending this extension and I want to acknowledge my fellow planning commissioners for, again, coming to the table with some great clarification and great questions. It's a pleasure to work with a group of people who are always civil, honest, and, and open to different ideas and that they are constantly putting the citizens of San Mateo as their number one priority as they make their decisions. So do we take a vote on this matter this evening? Are we ready to go with the vote? Who wants to do the resolution?
I'll make a resolution to adopt, I mean, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to approve a two-year extension of an approved tentative parcel map and associated planning application approvals for the block 21 mixed-use project.
We have a second?
I'll second that motion.
For the roll call vote, Chair Abner?
Yes.
Vice Chair Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wiggins?
Yes.
Vote passes 5-0, we'll close this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to introduce the second item?
Yes. Item number two, Citywide Transportation Demand Management Ordinance Update.
This is an informational presentation with no action required. We will start with the staff presentation, followed by clarifying questions, public comments, and then wrap up with any final commissioner questions and/or comments.
All right. Good evening, Chair Abner, thank you for having me. Sue Allen Atkinson, I'm the Principal Transportation Planner with the city's Public Works Department, and I'm the city's project manager on the San Mateo Citywide TDM ordinance effort. Tonight, you'll hear from me. Randall Bustos is also on the project team for this effort. And then we also have Matt Goine from Farron Peers, who is the consultant team that's helping us on this project. So this is an overview on this project and basically an introduction to the effort. Okay, so tonight we'll be giving you a high-level overview of the citywide TDM ordinance. This is really an opportunity to give you that introduction to the project. We'll be back to you later on in the process with additional opportunities to provide feedback on the draft ordinance and on the contents of, of the ordinance. So tonight we'll be going over again an introduction, the work plan for the effort, potential TDM measures that may be included in the future ordinance, and then the remaining schedule for the project and what to expect moving forward. So first off, introduction. So this project, before I begin, I just want to note, is a grant-funded project through the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. The city applied for this project and received a technical assistance grant from MTC in 2021 for this effort. So through that technical assistance grant, we're working with Farron Peers, who's leading a consultant team on the project that's also composed of Nelson Nygaard staff as well as urban planning partners. So just a brief overview, I'm sure through many of the projects that have been before you, you're familiar with the term TDM or Transportation Demand Management. But just to give that educational background, we wanted to refer to this definition from Mobility Lab, which is really a leader in the TDM space coming out of Arlington, Virginia. So what they say is that transportation demand management is really influencing people's behavior to use existing infrastructure in more efficient ways. So more efficient ways of travel are those that use less space than driving by yourself, like walking, biking, using scooters, or taking transit. Through implementing TDM, we do try to help people use the existing infrastructure. And these types of ordinances put in place measures that encourage people to make use of that existing infrastructure. Another way to think about TDM is about how it can allow people to do more of their daily activities without driving. So some of those approaches include offering more mobility options, providing incentives not to drive and to use other options, and educating people about what options are available to them. So again, this is about using all modes of transportation, including driving. It's just utilizing different modes when possible and utilizing all modes more effectively. So the use of TDM measures to induce less driving has the result of reduced congestion, reduced emissions, multimodal safety, and more efficient land use. And that's really the goal when we're implementing TDM measures. So this graphic shows some classic TDM measures that you may already be familiar with from planning applications that you've seen. So this is things like incentives to use public transit, having car share available, having incentives or subsidies for ride share or bike share. And then further along in this meeting, we'll discuss other measures such as parking and pricing, land use and density, and supportive onsite amenities that may be considered as TDM measures. So first, the purpose and goals for doing the citywide TDM ordinance. As many of you are familiar with, we do already have some requirements regarding transportation demand management, both in the city and regionally, and we'll touch on those in a moment. This citywide TDM ordinance really looks to expand what we already have so that more projects are providing these measures in order to effectively incentivize people to use other modes of transportation. So what we are looking to do is to envision a more comprehensive approach to TDM than what we have today to recommend trip reduction goals throughout the city, not just in the small areas or certain projects where it's required today. So the goals of this project include developing a draft TDM ordinance for a commission and for city council to consider, to support the citywide goals of encouraging walking, bicycling, and transit use, and to develop programs that are tailored to San Mateo and to the unique context of the city. So just to go into a little bit of detail on what we currently have regarding TDM in San Mateo, many of you are familiar with the Rail Corridor Transit Oriented Development Plan, or TOD Plan. That's a plan that has, that sets a trip reduction goal for the Rail Corridor TOD Zone, which mainly comprises areas around the Hillsdale Caltrain Station and Hayward Park Caltrain Station. We also have our current 2030 general plan as well as our upcoming 2040 general plan. Our current general plan emphasizes the use of TDM throughout the city and the draft 2040 general plan really expands on that by really including an eye toward multimodal transportation and an emphasis on TDM measures. We also have existing code in our municipal code as well as our adopted transportation impact analysis, or TIA, guidelines that were adopted in 2020. And we have a number of active transportation plans that serve as a blueprint for the multimodal infrastructure that the TDM measures really encourage residents and employees to utilize. And at this point, I will hand it off to Matt Goine with Farron Peers and he'll move forward into the regional context.
Great, thank you, Sue Allen. Can you, you can hear me, right? Great, thank you, Commissioner. So similar to that, the local level, there's also a lot of state and regional policies that this program will help the city become either compliant with or just at least consistent with, whether it's statewide goals to reduce VMP, vehicle miles traveled, or to just align the city with recent laws relating to restricting the city's ability to enforce minimum parking requirements, for example. That Plan B area 2050 also has TDM requirements as one of the critical components to reduce the amount of traffic that's generated by future development, particularly those that are located within transit-oriented communities, such as those around the Caltrain stations. And this also provides the opportunity, as Sue Allen mentioned, to align city policy with CCAG's congestion management program and the TDM policies that are required there. So this map shows that where the priority development areas and transit-oriented communities are within the city of San Mateo, that this would align as, align the city's policies with. And as Sue Allen mentioned, MTC is the funding partner for this as they are excited for local communities such as San Mateo to take the bold steps of having a locally appropriate TDM policy where measures are tailored to the context, specifically, you know, is there a Caltrain station or are you farther away and do you need other modes of travel? Excellent. And currently in the city of, anywhere in San Mateo County, CCAG's TDM policy requires that for all projects that generate more than 100 trips, you, this developer will need to prepare a TDM plan for CCAG compliance. And so how this process will change that is that it will supersede the CCAG's policy with this new local policy and allow the city to just align its, this TDM program with local ordinances and other policies in the general plan rather than just relying on this regional framework. Excellent. So I'm going to step you through the remaining work plan next, and then I'll- and then I'll give you some examples of TDM measures. So our framework that we're going to use to develop the TDM ordinance really starts with a few key questions that we're working on answering right now, starting with what sort of performance metrics do we want the TDM ordinance to accomplish? What are mandatory elements that should be included for any projects? And also, do those differ based on the geographic context, as I've mentioned? And for the city, the city needs to figure out what, how, who should do the monitoring? How often should it occur? And what does compliance look like to make sure that developers are delivering what the city needs to accomplish its goals? And this just map showing the context and showing the draft general plan study areas shows another way that we're considering just the different contexts between, for example, Caltrain-oriented neighborhoods where there is more transit, there's walkable, more walkable environments, and some of the areas that have less fixed, that aren't, don't have fixed rail transit, for example, and may need to rely on shuttles, for example, to supplement some of that transit service. So this has been an important part of just understanding how different requirements will apply to different neighborhoods. Next slide. So far, we've been talking to a variety of different stakeholders who will be responsible for implementing these measures or just be partners, as in the program with the city. It includes small and local business owners, transportation providers, and regional agencies, as well as local developers who have a lot of lessons learned and can provide really helpful insights about what works, what doesn't in this type of context, as well as what are the barriers and opportunities for them when, you know, considering TDM measures to implement. With respect to our schedule, we're about a third of the way through where we've developed a lot of the initial content, done a best practice research of other TDM programs, as I'll present on briefly, talked to some initial stakeholders of the last few months, as I just mentioned. And this is an opportunity to gather your feedback and to understand what, how this program can best support San Mateo's goals and the local San Mateo context. We'll be then recording back to the city council later this year and then coming back to you all, as well as the stakeholder groups, with a draft plan to review before finally going to city council for adoption. Now I'm just going to briefly cover the range of TDM measures that we're looking at right now. Just at a high level, we're happy to discuss these in more detail if you would like. I'm going to start with just what is the places that we looked. And our partners at Nelson Nygaard on the team did a deep dive investigation on some of the best practice examples of programs throughout the Bay Area, as well as across the country. And this helped us develop both an innovative list and understand kind of what works, what doesn't for different contexts. You can see more detail in this near staff report. The first set of measures, though, that we wanted to consider are just marketing measures. We want people to be, to know that these measures are available. There are options besides just driving yourself in a single occupancy vehicle. And so this really requires some engagement with the local, you know, the local property owner, building owner, or just to connect with tenants, residents, and employees. Subsidies and transit passes are an important way to help people just lower the cost of taking transit and incentivize transit. And so we're looking into ways to coordinate this with either existing programs. And that could include something like the Clipper Bay Class Pilot Program that's already been active at several affordable housing projects in San Mateo. Shuttles and transit are, of course, a critical part to any sort of helping people, you know, rely less on, on single occupancy vehicles. And last mile shuttles, for example, are very important for areas that don't have Caltrain service. But any route development project can be transit supportive and, you know, such as those that are located just next to transit stops can provide enhanced transit centers, shelters, as one of their onsite design measures. Bicycle and pedestrian access is, of course, critical for people just walking and biking and enjoying their neighborhood around them. It can be helped by just having convenient bicycle, bicycle parking, repair stations, as well as just making it clear how projects, when they're developed, can support, implement the city of San Mateo's design standards or help implement the bicycle pedestrian master plan or the future complete streets plan. Ride sharing and cartpooling can be really effective for employees who, just riding with someone else can be great for the environment and also just reduces stress of the commute. So this can be an effective program to include. Shared mobility programs are really important for just helping people rely less on owning a car because they didn't have other options available, such as having car share or just having a, potentially having a mobility wallet available to spend on different modes in lieu of owning a car. There's a variety of tech-assisted approaches that can really help folks just connect better to the systems that are available. And so this could be incorporated within the program. Next slide. Parking pricing is one of the most effective ways to reduce vehicle trips. And so that's something that we want to consider, whether it's measures of what, what happens if parking is unbundled from the cost of a residential unit or the cost of a lease with a business. We want to be able to make sure that that's locally appropriate for San Mateo. Electric vehicle charging infrastructure, while does not reduce VMT, it is a critical part to any sort of sustainable infrastructure plan. So we want to be able to consider that as we, and make sure it ties to other city ordinances as we develop this ordinance. And finally, the land use location diversity and density projects is one of the biggest drivers of how many people and how often people drive. And so we want to just be cognizant of that as we develop our program and make sure that the measures are tailored to the types of development and where they are going into. So with that, thank you, Sue Ellen. I'll let you wrap up.
Thanks, Matt. So we'll just go over the remaining schedule and what to expect moving forward. So as Matt mentioned, we've completed the best practices review, existing conditions evaluation, and also the initial stakeholder focus groups. Tonight, we're presenting this introductory overview to the Planning Commission. And tomorrow night, we'll be doing the same for the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission. Through the rest of fall, we'll be working on narrowing all of those TDM measures that you just heard about down into a workable list and evaluating their effectiveness for the various areas within the city. For example, some, some measures work better when you have more, closer proximity to transit as opposed to areas that are further outlying from transit. We'll be developing the TDM policy framework, as Matt noted, and then testing the framework with, sort of ground truthing that framework with previously completed projects within the city to see were the ordinance to be in effect, how those projects would have developed their TDM plans under those constraints. And also developing compliance and monitoring proposals for the ordinance. Later this fall, we'll be presenting the city council with this introduction, as well as a progress review and getting feedback on that framework development. Going through the winter, we'll be developing the draft TDM ordinance and program guidelines. And then going into the spring, we'll be back before the commissions and city council to review the draft and final ordinance and program guidelines for this project. And then moving into implementation toward the summertime. So with that, we have a few questions for you to take into consideration as you're providing feedback. The first is, do you have any general questions for us, either about this project or TDM within San Mateo? Second, what unique opportunities or challenges do you see within San Mateo that this citywide TDM ordinance should consider? For example, some that we've heard from our focus groups where we posed a similar question was the fact that the city is lucky enough to have three Caltrain stations, whereas other jurisdictions don't have that access. So that's something unique within the city that our ordinance should take into consideration. And then finally, in your work, are there any creative TDM measures that you would suggest be considered as part of this ordinance effort? With that, that concludes the staff presentation. Myself and Rendell are available for questions. We also have Matt available for questions, and Molly Riddle, also from Farron Peers, on the line as well.
Thank you. Do we have questions, or do we have public comment?
Chair Abner, would you like to start with clarifying questions first and then go on to public comments?
Sure. So can we open up public comment?
Yes, of course. No, that's okay. You could just go up to the microphone.
Thanks so much for, for letting me go first. I appreciate it. I am going to try to make it home before it gets totally dark. Yeah, I came here just to hear about the Transit Demand Management Plan. I haven't read the full report. Just my first reaction, listening to it, is that, of course, you know, you're talking about everything that the city really needs. We really do need more and better ways to get around without always having to rely on our cars. You know, everybody pretty much has a car these days, or most people do. But it's great to be able to get out of it whenever you can. And the one thing that I had noticed was that in the bike section, there were, with the best practices, there were a lot of things that sort of make biking nicer, like having good parking, for example, for your bike, and bike repair stations. But to me, in the end, those are sort of like frills. And the really essential thing that you need to be able to get on your bike is safe, safe ways to bike and get where you're going. And I think the city really needs better bike lanes, better thought-through bike lanes. We do have bike lanes, but a lot of them, or most of them, are really on the busy streets rather than on quieter streets. Many of them go for a few blocks and then they end. So for example, my husband bikes to, to the downtown Caltrain. He can't take bike lanes all the way. And I bike actually all the way to Millbrae-Bart. And there actually are bike lanes almost the whole way, but they are on the busiest roads. I bike down San Mateo and then California all the way to Bart. And cars almost hit me often, just, you know, taking a right-hand turn without noticing me, especially at night. Those streets are really poorly lit. So just better bike lanes on quieter streets is really, I think, the key thing to get people on their bikes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a safe trip home.
If anybody wants to comment on Zoom, please raise your hand now. Chair Abner, it looks like we don't have any more public commenters.
Okay, we'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission for questions and comments.
Ruth, Chair, I have a ton of questions. I'm not going to ask all of them. But I'll try to ask the ones that might facilitate our discussion. And then Sue Ellen, I may just email you a bunch more. So thanks to you, thanks to staff and consultants for putting all this together. I read through the whole packet. It took me a little while to get into it. Now I feel like I'm really into it. So that's why I have so many questions. On our, on our goal, you had, you're probably still workshopping what the goal is. Is this meant to be citywide, or is it meant to cover the yellow and blue areas? Or is it just meant to tackle new development?
This is meant to be a citywide ordinance. In terms of the yellow and blue areas, I'm going to just bring up the map that I think you're referring to. And I can't quickly speak and share at the same time. I apologize.
There was actually even a different one that was more abstract. And I think it was about something related to CCAG, maybe your MTC.
The MTC requirement.
Yeah, so it was even, you had a different map.
This one.
That one.
Yep. Wrong one. Sorry. Okay, I'm going to end that. I'm not doing a good job on sharing. It is expected to be a citywide ordinance, thanks, Rendell. And it will apply outside of these orange and blue areas. So what's intended is that within the areas, actually all direct to this map, we have basically three tiers throughout the city that are in alignment with the general plan study areas. And that's how we're looking to create the geographical areas that will be covered by this citywide TDM ordinance. So as you can see, it's outside of those green and orange areas on the MTC map. So that first area is the downtown area and the transit-oriented communities areas. Those are those areas that are within a half mile of transit. And they'll see slightly different TDM measures, for example, than the Tier Two areas, which are further away from transit, but those areas that through the general plan effort, we're expecting to see more redevelopment. And then further Tier Three is any of those areas outside of the downtown and the redevelopment areas. So to more fully answer your question, this ordinance is expected to likely apply only to new development, but it will apply citywide.
That was my next question, the existing versus the new. Thank you for that. And my computer went to sleep. Let me pull up my other questions. I think I had just a few clarifying questions on the, some of the precedent studies from other cities. East Palo Alto is using average daily traffic as a metric versus VMT. And if some of these are too in the weeds, I can email them and get to understand later. But I was, I'll throw that in there along with Redwood City, which I think is tracking mode share versus trip reduction or VMT. There's a couple of different metrics. So maybe speak generally, if you can, to why different cities end up with different metrics. And I want to, I'll come, I'll do this in comments too, but I want to keep bringing it back to the main goal. Maybe we don't know what the goal is yet, but I'm trying to understand what would make the most sense for us, so.
I'll answer generally, and then I'll invite Matt or Molly to respond a little more. So you're, you're correct that in terms of metrics for compliance with TDM measures, different cities have different metrics that they utilize. And we have not yet even begun the, the process of determining what our metric for compliance or success would be for this project. And as you'll note in the best practices, there are multiple options to choose from. There are reasons for which different cities may choose different metrics. It may be alignment with other adopted plans. It may be alignment perhaps with their own city's TIA guidelines or something of that nature. But again, we're, we're not yet at that point in our process where we can determine which path we're going to go. With that, I'll ask Matt to chime in if, if he can.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right. And just to provide additional context, Redwood City, you know, developed their citywide transportation plan that where they, you know, measured the mode shares, which is generally a little bit more complicated than adding average daily traffic to gather because you need to gather surveys. And so they did that through a citywide plan, and then they set goals based on that. And so that, understanding that there's a slight difference there, average daily traffic easier because you could just go out and count the number of cars that are generated every day. Mode share does require going in and taking surveys. Some cities do require a combination of the two, such as South San Francisco, which they focus on mode share for their entire east of 101 employment area. They don't do that for residential, but they focus on it for east of 101 employment area because there's a lot of big employers that can easily survey their, their employees. So those are some just high-level considerations that we'll be discussing with staff.
Thank you. And I'll just maybe do a couple more. For hotels, I know it's early days, but I always find it's really challenging to do TDM with hotels. Is there a sense yet for, if that would get tackled in San Mateo? I think I saw a reference, at least existing, TDM measures just view hotels retail. But it seems like the, you know, most of the traffic with hotels is a guest, and it's probably tough to tackle that. Is there any sense of where you're headed on that?
We don't have a sense of where we're going with that yet. We're still in the development phase.
Okay. And last one, I'm going to make sure I understood the Arlington precedent as much as possible. It's noted as being sort of really successful, a lot of usage. And it seems like it's coupled with a density bonus program. And is, would I be doing it a disservice to think of it as benefiting from effectively being a density bonus program? And through the density bonus, you have the ability to get robust funding, robust measures. And then the fact that Arlington's also more of a, I think, you know, they've got the equivalent of a Bart line running through there. They already got a lot of density. What I'm trying to get at is how much should we be taking from Arlington that would also work here?
I think I'll ask Matt if he can respond to that offhand. Otherwise, we can look into that and get back to you.
The Arlington example, just briefly, Arlington example is one where the city, it's an opt-in type program. So, there's a little bit of a difference here between the city of San Mateo, which needs to be compliant with C-CAG policies at a minimum, which means that it can't be an opt-in program. That being said, the city of San Mateo could offer, if there are more things that the city of San Mateo wants to get out of its TDM program, there could be things that it offers. It certainly does make it a little bit more complex, but that would need to be investigated.
Thank you. I'll stop asking questions so someone else can.
I don't have questions right now.
I'll go. Thank you. Through the chair. The question I had for you regarding transportation demand management, if you would go, can you go back to the slide where it shows kind of the different areas that it touches as far as, you know, teaching, land use, things like that? I think it was towards the beginning of the presentation. Well, while you're looking for that, I guess the question I have for you, as far as the city and city staff and consultants are looking at it, is where do we see transportation demand management kind of ending and just planning, you know, planning processes like the general plan, like a bike master plan, pedestrian master plan, starting? Like, where does that transition kind of handoff? Because I think of, you know, a place like my neighborhood where, you know, there's a lot of users of the streets. The streets are narrow. You know, there's a lot of, you know, potential conflicts with cars and all sorts of things. And parts of it are getting, are going to be redeveloped, parts of it are not. And what, where does this program, where does the transportation demand program kind of, where does that leave a place like that? Like, is it, I'm just curious, is it all-encompassing, or is it really just focused on giving new development, like incentives or priorities? Like, how does it touch the planning process?
So, in terms of the question of where it fits in with the general plan and a bicycle master plan, and a pedestrian master plan for that matter, is, you know, the general plan is really the blueprint for the city. You know, the city's guiding vision for how the city will be developed in the future. And within our current general plan and within the draft 2040 general plan, there are provisions for implementation of TDM in order to encourage mode shift, to, you know, in the future, have the focus of transportation not be solely on driving, but to be utilizing other modes. So, you know, in the hierarchy, the general plan is up here. Infrastructure plans, like the pedestrian master plan and the bicycle master plan, come in to support the goals of the general plan. So, the general plan has goals for that mode shift, for having bike and pedestrian safety, for having ways to get around the city that are not driving. And that's where the bicycle and pedestrian master plans come in, is to envision those networks to make that happen. The way that TDM really fits in is that it provides that incentivization and encouragement to use those networks. So, it's essentially supporting that shift to multimodal transportation by providing the education, by providing the incentive, and by emphasizing the use of those more efficient modes of transportation that are envisioned in the infrastructure plans because of the vision in the general plan. So, for neighborhoods, TDM typically applies to new development of a certain size. We have yet to determine what that size is going to be. It's, you know, a certain number of units, or a certain number of square footage, or trips, or something of that nature. There is opportunity for TDM measures to be offered more broadly in the future, were that to be a direction that the city wanted to take. Were that to be something that, you know, the city wanted to offer a more broad TDM program, like transit passes for all residents, or bike rebates, or something of that nature, for all residents. So, in terms of affecting at the individual, for example, single-family or small multifamily housing level, that would be more of a city-based program. This TDM ordinance is likely to affect primarily the new development of a slightly larger size.
Okay.
So, I hope somewhere in that roundabout, I answered your question.
No, no, that's helpful. The other question I had is, it's kind of a continuation of this one, is like, where is that handoff between, you know, we had a speaker here emphasizing, you know, safety, or, you know, feeling of safety, or convenience, or lighting, things like that. You know, where is the, where do we, like, make that transition where it's like, okay, it's not, it's, this is the responsibility of this new development, maybe to put in new lights, increase the sidewalk, or something like that. So, it's better lit, and it's, there's sorts of things. Is that part of the transportation demand management program? Or could be, but then, like, implementing a, you know, bike lane or something like that on an existing street, that wouldn't be, like, or is it, like, does that include, like, payments of funds as part of the transportation demand management? Like, where, how does that all swirl together?
The answer to that broadly is it could.
Okay.
And in terms of lighting, we do assess that for new development, anyway. In terms of sidewalk width, sidewalk standards, you're super familiar with the pedestrian master plan and implementing those requirements. But, all that being as it is, a TDM ordinance could include measures such as enhancing the built environment. For example, the regional C-CAG policy does include built infrastructure as an option for meeting certain TDM trip reduction requirements. So, broadly, the answer is it could. We're not at that point yet for our ordinance to determine how it factors in.
Okay. And then one last question I have for you. And I don't know where this will lie, but, whether it's peripheral to it, or if it's right in it, but say we wanted to improve the infrastructure of our downtown, say, like B Street, would that, like, perhaps payment of fees, or some sort of funding that would go, that could be earmarked, or go into a fund for improvements to our downtown, would that be potentially within the realm of tier transportation demand management, or is that maybe separate?
It's possible, but in an area like a downtown, you get into the potential of having an improvement district, for example. So, I think within a downtown area, there are multiple mechanisms by which you might be considering something like that. And again, we're not at the point of determining if built infrastructure would be part of the ordinance.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. This is very helpful.
Thank you. Through the chair. I have some comments, but I think we'll hold those till later. I have three very tactical questions. They might be a little bit in the weeds as well. One, you listed some stakeholders that you've been speaking to, and I was curious, we have a active transportation community group, Move San Mateo. And I was curious if that is one of the groups that has been spoken to, or if it would make sense for them to be included as a stakeholder group.
For the purpose of this ordinance, in speaking with transportation providers and the like, we focused on entities that provide transportation programs. So, that's like Samtrans, Caltrain, and we're speaking with Commute.org tomorrow. In terms of advocacy groups, that would come likely as part of implementation of the ordinance to help with the education and information about how to get around. But as part of the stakeholder information gathering, what we're really focused on is what programs are available that could be TDM measures.
Got it. So, small and medium businesses are on there because they are transportation providers?
Small and medium businesses are on there because they would be entities that would be providing TDM measures to employees.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense. I feel like a group like that might have some good ideas, but maybe we can just encourage them to give public comment. So, I noticed Uber and Lyft subsidies are considered a shared mobility TDM measure, and I was kind of curious why. I don't normally think of people using Uber and Lyft to carpool. It seems like a more one-to-one situation. So, I'm just curious if that's like a common industry standard, or, yeah.
Providing incentives or subsidies to utilize a transportation networking company like Uber or Lyft is a standard TDM measure in the industry because it supports not owning a vehicle. So, there have been studies whereby if you don't own a vehicle, but you have access to a vehicle when you need it. In the past, that was more so on the car sharing, like the Zipcar sort of.
Got it.
Area. But really presently, Uber and Lyft are what are being utilized more and more.
That makes sense. I wondered if it was like a last-mile thing as well, you know, if it was maybe to help people get that last mile.
It certainly can be. And again, that supports not owning a vehicle, or not driving your vehicle.
Great. My last very tactical question, under the case studies, it was slide number three. I noticed that Bart and the San Francisco Bay Ferry are listed under Transit Services Available for San Mateo, and I was curious why.
I'm going to ask Matt to speak to that.
As our public commenter pointed out, you have to bike to Millbrae to get to.
Can we call that slide quickly?
You can take the train.
I've done that.
To.
You take the train.
To Millbrae and then transfer.
And then you just walk across the platform to the Bart train.
I think the graph had actually shown, or the table had actually shown, that they weren't applicable to San Mateo. I caught that also.
Oh, in one of the attachments?
It's slide, yeah. It's slide, oh, sorry, not your slide three. It's slide, page three or slide three in the, in the.
Report?
In the best practices. I don't, I don't think it says there's not applicable because there's, I'm scrolling to it now. It says, oh, it does say relevance for San Mateo NA, but then why is Samtrans and Caltrain NA? Those are definitely very relevant.
I'll ask Matt if he can speak to that.
Well.
Trying to get there. Sorry.
Wait, I don't understand that, yeah. Because I thought, I didn't read it that way.
Because, I mean, if, yeah. I'll stop opining and wait for the answer.
If I can, if I can speak on that, the, this chart is showing the relevance for San Mateo in terms of each of the case studies. So, you'll see, like, east Palo Alto, the relevance to our jurisdiction is the proximity and new TDM measures. But I can see Transit Services, understood, you do have to connect in order to get to Bart and the ferry, but those are services that our residents do utilize.
And then shouldn't, like, PTA be on there as well for the same reason?
We can revisit that and edit that.
And then wouldn't Bart be applicable?
Yeah, that's what we're saying. If you can connect to it, then it should be on the list.
Okay.
The not applicable means that San Mateo is not a case study for San Mateo.
Got it. That's, well, that's what I thought, and that's why I was.
But we can take those comments, and we can update that page in order to make it more clear.
Can you transfer to the ferry?
With a TNC.
Okay.
I mean, via a TNC, you could get to the ferry. The problem is it takes you to Oakland. And then you transfer to a ferry that takes you to the ferry building in San Francisco. So, that's not a problem if anyone's going to Oakland. But I saw traffic on 101, and I was like, I'm going to take the boat. Takes you to Oakland, and then you wait and get on another boat to San Francisco, so.
There's not very many ways.
Separate issue.
So.
Yeah.
Good to know. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Maybe there's a Samtrans bus that goes there. Anyway, sorry.
I don't think I have questions per se. I, I thought that's what that NA meant, so I'm glad we clarified that. I was confused. Well, I guess, I think you just talked about this, but maybe a little more clarification. So, there was an item about small businesses that are applying for a business license, or renewing their business license, and that's where a TDM could be applicable? I'm sorry, I don't have page numbers or anything. But, I mean, it's that same question that I think Commissioner Nugent kind of talked about. And I don't necessarily have a question, I guess. It was just, I just wanted confirmation that that, I think I read that, and I don't have, I can't find it now, that it would, the TDM would apply to not just new planning projects, but also to, like, existing businesses that are renewing their business license.
That is how east Palo Alto has set up their citywide TDM ordinance. That's not necessarily what will be finalized in San Mateo. Yeah, east Palo Alto does have a very broad ordinance.
Okay.
So, I do have a few questions. And I look at this measure as an extremely important component of our city general plan, housing element, and so on and so forth. So, and I feel that it's not only important, but it might be the most difficult one to complete because you've got so many moving parts, and it ties to an extremely large amount of components that are in other documents. So, as you move forward, and you don't have an adopted general plan or a housing element, how do you know, how do you, what baseline do you have to work for to put these incentives in place? What, if the end goal is to reduce vehicle miles traveled, and the goal, that, the end goal of that is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, how are you able to implement plans if you don't know the full parameter of what is going to be projected to be built where?
I think that's a good question. For clarification, the general plan is expected to be completed at the end of this calendar year. I'm looking at Zach. And this ordinance is envisioned to be adopted in the spring. So, we will be following up on the heels of the general plan, and we will have that guiding document adopted at that point.
It's shooting for, yeah, Q1 of '24, to have something ready for adoption. Close. We're shooting for end of the year, but it's slid a little bit. But we're still on track, and then that ultimately keeps us aligned with getting to the ballot in November of '24.
So, is the, is this plan a required component of the general plan update?
It's not required per se. It is currently included as a goal or policy. I apologize. I don't recall off the top of my head. But it's also in alignment with other adopted documents for the city, including the Climate Action Plan and Reduction of Greenhouse Gas Emissions, as outlined in that document as well.
Beautiful. So, I think the last time that I checked, or was told, that our greenhouse gas emission inventory has drastically reduced. I think when we put that plan together nine years ago, we were 700,000 metric tons. And I think now it's considerably, the last report I saw was like in the 500,000. So, is the, is this, the TDMs, are they tied to our own greenhouse gas emissions reductions, or is there a baseline from CTAG, or whatever organization, that we need to make, meet? And the reason I'm saying is that I think the first time that I heard the discussions around this subject is that there's quite a bit of leeway which a city can use to set their own, their benchmarks. But is there, is there a minimum that you need to meet?
Keeping in mind that even with a reduction in greenhouse gas emission production, by far, the majority of GHG emissions are attributed to on-road transportation, which is the area. is the area that a TDM ordinance and those measures therein seek to reduce. That being said, there's no GHG emission reduction goal that we're charged with meeting.
Okay, all right. Could you pull up that slide that had like 10 or 12 different measures that you could concentrate on or use? And I did not write down the page number.
Was it this one?
So, yes, that's it. Thank you. What caught my eye and what I had thought about prior to the meeting was that the importance of land use, land use changes. And that was mentioned on the last slide of where you broke some of these down also. Where, where in these choices, what would give you the biggest bang for the buck if you had to choose?
I think I'll let Matt chime in on that, as he's been a bit more in the weeds on the research for us.
Well, as, thank you for commenting on land use. Land use is extraordinarily, it is extraordinarily important. And the location that people live and work, when people live and work near other amenities that are within walking distance, that of course makes it easier to reduce your vehicle trips. Same for biking distance. And so the location and kind of diversity of land uses, there's extensive research showing that the density and diversity of land uses reduces trips. And the current state of practice is governed by the state of California, California Air Pollution Control Officers Association, and that lists land use measures as the most effective at reducing greenhouse gas emissions. That being said, the way that we've structured this, as we've discussed several times, is to make sure that San Mateo is getting the biggest bang for your buck on both the, those land uses that are oriented around transit, and that there are measures tied to that geographic context, as well as looking at what measures would be required to address projects that are farther away in redevelopment areas, not next to Caltrain. So it's important to understand that there are measures that tie to both. We just need to kind of move the levers, you know, for example, on last mile shuttles, or increasing bus service to areas that don't currently have transit service or the density and diversity of land uses.
Thank you. But there's a decent amount of these components which the city of San Mateo has minimal input. And I'm sure there are great incentives, but to me, it's almost like we have changed a lot of our new building codes to be more sustainable, yet it leaves 90% of the city out of the mix because we aren't making, the existing, the existing stock is so hard to include in those, those measures. On page six of nine in the report, it stated that the city of San Mateo was a tier three. What does that mean? I did not have time to look it up myself.
Sure. I'm happy, happy to answer that. That is referring to the type of transit service based on the Metropolitan Transportation Commission's Plan Bay Area, their Transit-Oriented Community Strategy. And so what that is, is that MTC is our region's, you know, provides transportation money for investments that come through the state and federal governments. They do most of that. And the goal of that is to help fulfill the goals of Plan Bay Area 2050. And so what they've done is for transit-oriented communities, those communities that are within a half mile of a transit station, based on the level of transit service that they are, there are certain requirements that they have to implement. And so tier one communities are basically downtown San Francisco and Oakland with, you know, a ton of BART service. For example, tier two communities are those with both BART and Caltrain, or just multiple lines. And then tier three communities are those just with one kind of fixed rail service.
So tier three is the lowest of all the tiers?
Tier four is those without a fixed rail service. But, sorry, it includes stuff like SMART. It includes bus rapid transit routes. It includes, I think, ferry terminals as well. So those are the transit-oriented communities. It's just one geographic way of organizing the region in terms of, in similar types of communities.
Thank you very much. I made myself a note. Has the Complete Streets program been adopted?
No, we're in the process of developing it. It's expected to be complete in early 2024.
2024, okay. Quite a long process, isn't it?
It does.
Let me see if any questions. That was it? Thank you for your information. So since we're not voting on this item, do we want to offer our suggestions in closing comments now?
Through the chair, would you mind putting that slide back up with the three questions for the commission?
Through the chair, I could, I could start.
Please.
Okay. I'm going to put on my optimist hat. And I guess I'll deliver some comments and I'll, sorry if not all of it's totally clear, Sue Ellen. So, and I'll follow up with an email just so you at least have a record, you don't have to type it all. But I guess my opinion is, I wouldn't want this to end up being something that's, that has limited impact. It feels like a rare opportunity to take a big swing at making this city better. And I think that's, what's at stake is, is a huge opportunity here. So I think at this point in the process, if we can focus on goals and outcomes, and you know, all know there'll be tons of minutia between step, you know, step, between A and B. And I think it gets into the weeds so much, and Chair Ebner is talking about how complicated this can get. So my preference is to focus on a North Star goal. And I don't know if it's, if that's been defined yet. I don't know if it's GHG reduction, really just reducing trips, or making the city safer, as we heard a commenter say. And I guess my opinion is that we, we focus on less cars equals more safety. So that's my sort of two cents input. Or at least, let's say slower cars, if we can do less. So I'd like to see a focus on on safety as well, echoing the commenter. And if we can, I just have the sense that it's going to get so complicated. If we lose, if we don't have a good North Star, then I don't know that we'll, we'll get very far. I think it'll be, it'll be hard to get everywhere that the optimist hat-wearing me wants to get to. I really want to, I want to find some way to include existing developments. I'm not trying to encumber or, you know, landowners or anything of that sort. But, you know, if there's TDM measures about like, you know, for a business to like pass out flyers saying, hey, there's transit service nearby, I don't know why we can't target our entire community with at least informational information. And I think, you know, most of the footprint of the city geographically is car-centric, single-family home neighborhoods. And those are, that's the hardest, you know? The land use and transportation are tightly connected. And if you build sort of walkable communities that are mixed use, then a lot of this becomes so much easier. So we know we have a challenge there. And so I don't want us to just look at new development. Any way to get existing developments or developments that are coming in for, you know, requests from the city. I'm not trying to make anyone's life harder. I'm trying to make this program be more meaningful and more impactful. And again, for me, that's less and slower cars equals more safety. That's, that's my North Star. Again, focus on feasibility of implementation. I think if, I would prefer a program that yields more results versus one that's so complicated that by the time it trickles down to a TDM coordinator or someone else, it just doesn't have much impact on someone's daily life. So kind of like cut through the complexity if we, if we can, and focus that whatever we do can be implemented with fidelity. I think whatever we do deserves quantitative monitoring. I'd like to emphasize that. I hate to do all this and then not to know if it's actually making a difference, or you end up in the court of public opinion with no hard data to say if we, if we, you know, made a difference. And then one more high-level comment. I know that this ordinance can't overcome car-centric infrastructure. But if we can be vocal about, through the process, about where we think we're really going to move the needle, as well as where we're not going to be able to move the needle, I think that could benefit us at the broader scale, the scale of the general plan, to keep, keep our eye on things that we need to keep working on that the ordinance doesn't do. Okay, a few more detailed comments, slightly detailed. And there's, there's some things I saw in some of the examples. There's in-lu fees. I don't know if in-lu fees, you know, if it, if it just collects money and puts it in a pot and occasionally gets used. That's an example, I would fear that in-lu fees, someone just fees out and then no change is actually made. Or you wait five or 10 years to save up money and then make that change. So more things, there's plenty of carrots and sticks out there when you get to that point. But I saw a reference to in-lu fees in some cities, and to me, I thought that would not help us make meaningful change. I've dealt some with phased implementation and master plans in my day job. And I think when you get to that point, just think, just considerations for phased implementation, phased monitoring, phased compliance for big projects is just something that has to, has to be factored in. And otherwise, people are left to try to suss it out in a bit of a, you know, without guidance. And I think there's probably a time and a place for alternative compliance proposals. Probably not happening all the time, but occasionally, there's probably a chance for someone to meet our goals, which again, once they're like clearly defined, through different methods. And that's, the, another random comment is there's a bunch of stuff in San Jose's section that just kind of made sense to me. It seemed like sophisticated, but not overly complicated. It seemed, I almost wondered if whoever put that together has like done five of these and they didn't work out well. And like they, they learned lessons along the way. It just seemed like there's a lot of thoughtful things in there. So smaller thing there. And that, that might be it. I will, I'll format this and email it. But I kind of wanted to get all that out, at least for the other commissioners to hear. Thank you very much. And wait, do I, any general, I don't have other general questions? Or no, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. I'll go. First off, thank you for presenting. It was, it was a good overview. I also want to say pretty much everything that Martin said. I don't know if I have a whole lot else to add. That was fantastic input. I want to just thank Martin. This isn't my area of expertise, this kind of, this kind of policy. I tend to look at infrastructure and like what's the built environment far more. That's what I look at. And so to me, it's the safety of, and how people feel in the built environment has always been the forefront of what will incentivize more people getting out of their cars. You know, if they feel safe at night, if they feel safe not being in their cars, that's like the major obstacle for a lot of people, considering we have the best weather in America. Like, I grew up in Minnesota, you know, it's hard to walk to school. It's not hard to walk to school in the rain. The, it's, again, it's, it's really, people don't want to die. And there's still places in San Mateo where, you know, there's some iffy moments where your heart races because you don't feel seen. And, you know, the, the incentivizing of, of getting out of your car has that as its barrier to me. I think you can push and you can educate as much as you want. So, so, you know, to me, getting funding for infrastructure improvements, to me, seems like the most beneficial for our city. You know, the other things are nice, but I don't, I'm with Martin. I want to go for the biggest bang for the buck. I don't want to, I would like to not see tons of, tons of little things that have maybe very marginal or unknown benefit. So again, looking at case studies is great. I'm so glad you're doing it. But again, maybe extracting what were the most successful aspects of those case studies for anything that's not infrastructure. So those are my, those are my comments. Thank you again, Martin.
Thank you. Echoing Commissioner Wayans, I think the idea of a goal or a North Star is a really good one. Something that we can all use as that measuring stick to figure out if we're having significant impact. I was digging through my general plan notes because I remember that there is a multimodal transportation goal. And I was trying to dig through the old materials and figure out where the language ended up. But in our discussions and on the general plan, I remember at one point suggesting something like, you know, a goal, the goal could be design and implement a multimodal transportation system that prioritizes transit and active transportation modes, is sustainable, safe, and accessible for all users, and connects the community. And I realized that is about the built environment, design and implement. This, as has been explained, is about incentivizing use of the built environment. But I think elements of the language that I like that seem applicable are prioritizing transit and active transportation modes, sustainable, safe, and accessible. Like, I think if those words ended up in a goal, we would be in a really good place. And then I will just echo everything both of you have just said. I think all of us on this commission are pretty regular bikers, so we've all had the experience of biking through San Mateo. And, you know, it's really hard to incentivize people to do something that feels unsafe. You could not pay me enough money to jump out of an airplane. Won't do it. And, and so anything that we can do, you know, I forget exactly how you said it, but it's under consideration whether or not modifying the built environment would be part of this transportation demand management ordinance. I think it absolutely has to be because we, we're not going to be able to incentivize people to get out of their cars if we don't make our built environment feel safe to walk or bike or scoot in. And, you know, we've, we've thrown out ideas in the past on unrelated topics about can we use parking in lufies to build bicycle infrastructure? You're shaking your head, right? You know, can we use our transportation impact fees to build bicycle and parking infrastructure? There was one of the case studies where, this is getting really in the weeds, but it was like, projects of this size, pick two. Projects of this size, pick four, right? Something where we enable projects to improve the safety of the built environment, or require projects to improve the safety of the built environment, I think are going to be really important. Because all of these incentives aren't going to do anything if people don't feel safe. As for creative measures, beyond just what are creative ways we can get funding to fund the infrastructure, I'm not really sure. You mentioned hotels. I've noticed in a lot of hotels, especially internationally, they provide bicycles on site, and that seems to be really popular. and that seems to be really popular. And so, you know, I don't know, could there be some sort of TDM measure where hotels could offer to have onsite bike shares as an amenity for guests? Similarly, did it come up in a project before us, but, or did I read about it and then talk about it here? There was a developer who was giving e-bike to every unit in the building. I think you might know more about this.
I'm just agreeing that it came up somewhere recently.
It came up somewhere. I think that's a really creative solution, right? Like, great Caltrain pass, but like, ooh, e-bike that comes with my unit, especially for those of us who have gotten e-bikes and have realized how much they actually do change your usage of bicycling infrastructure. I think those are two things that come to mind. I'll have to think about this more. I think those are my comments, yeah.
Okay. I don't know that I have anything new to add too much. Great comments from the commission, from my fellow planning commissioners, including the, you know, the issue that safety is really important, you know, to get more, you know, to get new people riding their bikes, or walking, or, you know, out of cars. So that, I think, should be underscored for sure. I don't really have a lot of, I found it to be really interesting. I'm not sure if I can add a lot more than what others said, but I just sort of was reminiscing a little bit, like, well, first of all, I should say thanks for the update. It was very informative, and even though we know about TDM, it's helpful to get the current details and the current update. But when we moved here from Oakland years ago, we literally picked San Mateo because of the train. In looking for a city to move to on this side of the bay, we were leaving a city that had BART, and we wanted a city that had the train. So we were excited to see the neighborhoods that are so close to the train, and that there were three train stations in San Mateo. So I tried the train out for the first time before we even, you know, just before we decided on a city, we took the train from the city a couple times and other, you know, we tried it out, just to see like, what city do we want to move to? And compared it to, you know, like taking BART from Oakland to the city and into Berkeley and such. So the train and the three stations that we have are a real asset to the city, and, you know, and there's, as I said, there's many wonderful neighborhoods close to the train stations. And in fact, later, when my kids became teenagers, it was clear that the train and the connection to BART really gave, gives young people options, and, you know, sort of a sense of independence that they need to, you know, become young adults. So I really appreciated that as my kids were growing up and starting to use some transit on their own. They could walk from my house to train. So anyway, that was just me kind of reminiscing a little bit about that. I did have a comment, I guess this would help. I did think, I was trying to figure out where I had read that, but it was the piece about East Palo Alto applying the suggestion, the suggestion of applying this to small businesses that are renewing their business licenses. I think generally, that's a good idea, and, you know, I thought about that, because although some small businesses would see that as a burden, it's an idea worth considering, and I think that it's a possible way to reach more than just, you know, the projects that are coming for the planning department. You know, like, you know, people like me that work in a small business near a train station, but frankly, it's really expensive to take the train there and back, and my little company doesn't provide any, you know, incentives, but, you know, especially compared to, you know, like an electric car or hybrid car. So that, you know, whatever we can do to facilitate, you know, more users of transit when it's not, it's not currently very affordable for a lot of people, so. So I thought, I saw the business license renewal as a possible idea that sounded like a good one. And I will say that a lot of the developments that we see and the projects that we see that have many units and minimal parking spaces, I feel like they're, I mean, the developers must know what they're doing, and that's, you know, they have the options before them now to minimize parking, but I feel like it is a risk still, because, you know, people aren't, are still, you know, wanting to get in their cars to drive and all of that. So again, I mean, developers must know what they're, you know, they're not just, they're not in the business of taking risks of, you know, the program of the building, but I just wonder about some of these projects that have such minimal parking and how that will play out over time in terms of filling the units. Yeah, I just made a note during the presentation about ride sharing and carpooling. I thought that was interesting about Uber. It also reminded me of my days of living in Oakland and Berkeley and the whole casual carpooling concept. I don't know how many people know about that, but back before the internet and apps, you just stood in line and got in someone's car, and then you created a carpool. So anyway, that was another me reminiscing about the East Bay where there was different kind of transit. So those are my comments. I found it really interesting. I thought the discussion was really great, because a lot of thoughts that people had that I didn't think of. Thanks for all the hard work.
Sorry, through the chair. Anticipating that you may be doing a wrap-up here, I wanted to throw a few more things on, again, from this great discussion, a lot of your comments. I didn't talk at all about SamTrans, and I'm guilty of being impatient, and I'm either going to probably like bike or walk, and I'm not going to bother taking the bus, and just thinking about limitations of what this measure can do when it comes to service of a county or regional group like SamTrans or Caltrain. If we can't make them increase service, which probably is outside of a TDM measure, if we can sort of, that maybe then is an example of where we're limited, or where the goals we set, we're sort of can't go there, you know, until other things outside of our control happen. And so I just wanted to put in a quick plug for that, and as an example of, number one, I didn't talk at all about the bus, and so it's, you know, transit is, and Caltrain too, is an important part of this measure. But the other thing I just wanted to touch on was the TNCs, and I think TNCs might reduce car ownership, but in anything I've read, they don't reduce necessarily average daily traffic or vehicle miles traveled, and going on from that, they don't necessarily reduce GHGs. And so again, it depends on what our goals are, but if it's about, you know, less trips, less GHGs, I don't know, they have a great reputation as of late, but I don't want to toss them out entirely, but maybe mitigate, or, you know, set the level of how much they can really offer us. Okay, sorry to throw a few extra things on there. Thanks, everybody.
No problem. Thank you.
I'm just going to follow up really quickly about TNCs. So one thing that I am curious about is, you know, the increase in traffic that can be caused by TNCs, or, you know, the flat, it doesn't change the amount of traffic. I'm wondering if there is a difference in the type of, the type of place that they're being used? So, you know, in a more suburban area, say of the city or of the county, the use of a TNC would be more likely to provide somebody the ability to not have a car, whereas if you're in, say, San Francisco, it just becomes a more convenient bus ride? So I think it kind of depends on where you are, what kind of place you are. And I'm not sure, and that's just my speculation, so I would like, if there is a TNC aspect to this, let's see where that, how that plays out.
Thank you. Agreed.
Great work. Thank you for the very clear update. I don't envy your position at all, and you're still smiling, so good for you. You know, to me, there are challenges for every jurisdiction. I think what's going to be extremely important is how we're going to be able to implement them, and more often than that, that comes down to funding. I would love to see bike routes through all of the city, but we don't have the funds to do that yet. But it's good to have plans in place, and I think as most people have mentioned here, I'm much more keep it as simple as you can, because to make it complicated, it's just going to get too overwhelming for people who are trying to move things forward. I believe that we are going to VMT because LOS really did not serve the purpose that we had hoped it had. Again, this is a very challenging and complicated process, and there's even pushback on VMT, as I'm sure you're aware, from certain circles. And it was very discouraging to be at the Planning Commission Conference this year, and it was in a SEQA discussion, and the panelists said, "VMT is not going to work." So that's why we have to be creative. Just following the rules that are out there aren't going to get us where we need to go. So thank you for looking at the best practices and what can help this city. To me, a lot of it also comes, again, I mean, this is like the elephant in every discussion in this, in the city, it comes down to land use once again. And if we're able to marry that with these goals, it would be fantastic. Bike and walking, walking safety are critical. I almost got hit again today on my bike, and if I hadn't anticipated this, I would have been. So it's not only on the drivers, but drivers aren't looking for bikers or pedestrians at all. And I would, and I know that in the past, we had goals in the city to be net zero accidents with bikers and pedestrians, and I thought that was a great goal, and I think it's been stopped, and I don't know why. But I don't know if it's still part of the discussions. Obviously partnering with other jurisdictions. If you look at our roadways, if you travel in other countries, which I have done some, and they have roundabouts that keep traffic moving, and it just makes so much sense. People are not wasting their time sitting at stoplights constantly. I've got some roundabouts in my neighborhood, and they aren't really there for anything other than slowing people down, and they seem to work. Those are my comments. I think, as other commissioners have mentioned, the opportunity to make some substantial changes is now, especially with Bay Area Plan 2050. I mean, they are really about a lot of, a lot about transportation and how it all comes together. So thank you for your efforts. I really appreciate the update, and I look forward to the refined report when it comes out. Any other closing comments from anybody? Great. We'll close that and move on to announcements.
Just a couple of things to note for upcoming meetings. Just a reminder, if you have any anticipated absences, please let staff know as soon as you're aware for any of our regularly scheduled meetings. Coming up, our next meeting is July 25th. We do have one item, which is a study session for the Post and Beam Mixed-Use Project Downtown. And then on August 8th, we are going to have two items, a study session for our objective design standards, and then also apropos of what we discussed earlier tonight, we are bringing forward a code amendment related to our application extension section. So I think actually, finding number three might be a good topic to review, and I think merits some clarification. So I guess we've got some real-life experience to guide how we amend that section. So that's all I have to announce. Oh, yeah, and the other thing, starting next Monday, the draft general plan will be ready for public review, so stop by StriveSanMateo.org and take a look. And we're also adding additional resources to the website to help support public understanding of what went into the draft general plan. And then we have a variety of public outreach and engagement events and meetings coming up over the next few months, so stay tuned there, and then we'll be coming back in September to bring it before the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Any announcements from?
Yeah, well, it's not really an announcement. It's just a suggestion that our speaker, Diane Whittaker, requested that we add the item to the agenda for future, for a future Planning Commission meeting, and that was the letter from the San Mateo Heritage Alliance. I'd like to consider that, and I thought it was a good letter, and something that we really haven't talked about, which is, you know, the context of historical buildings in the city and in the downtown in particular, and we could resend that letter, I think it was in June.
I don't think I got it.
Yeah, I had to kind of look for it when she, when she...
I looked at it, I realized I had gotten it. It was number one, it was while I was on vacation. If that speaker's still listening, I have not read it. It got caught on vacation, but it was also, maybe because of the size of it, it was sent as a link, and I've been taught that everything is a phishing scam and don't run links, so I missed it for that reason. I have it now, and I'm at least going to read it and be prepared to discuss it. I'm always happy to talk about, if it's about, you know, sort of the downtown history and architectural character, I'm always happy to talk about that. I just haven't actually read the letter and don't know specifically, maybe, you know, what they want to talk about, so, but that was why, yeah, I hadn't read it yet, so.
So I'd be looking for some suggestions from staff on how we could address this if we felt like it.
I think the study session for objective design standards might be a good forum to have that initial discussion, and then maybe we could look at opportunities from there, because there's definitely a lot of parallels with what you'll be looking at that evening.
When did you say that is?
August 8th.
Okay.
So I did actually meet with Diane Whittaker and Keith Weber, who were, who developed the letter, and one of the things that I would also, like, in addition to the objective design standards, which I think is important, that's probably the big thing that we want to provide input on, but also, you know, there's going to be a period of time between now and when those are implemented, and I think it would be nice, and maybe this is part of the objective design standard discussion, but I feel like it might be separate, but I would like to be able to go through kind of our existing guidelines, design guidelines and planning frameworks, and then be able to provide staff with kind of guidance as to like what kind of architectural design we want to see, based on, you know, what existing guidelines we have, just so that it's clear to, you know, project applicants and that, you know, what it is that they're trying to achieve based on our guidelines. So it's not, so we're not getting projects that are so far away from what we, what we are expecting or hoping to see, especially in our downtown area, but just throughout the city as well. Because there's going to be a delay between when our objective design standards are finalized and in place, and so it'd be nice to be able to first kind of receive what we have currently in place for guidelines, and then how we as a commission want to interpret that, or what we are looking for. I think that would be helpful for staff and for future developments.
Given our schedule over the next six months, that could be pretty challenging. I would suggest the commission as individuals, you always have the opportunity to review those documents, and each time a project comes before you, you do have the opportunity to weigh in and provide that insight. Staff isn't the gatekeeper so much as the facilitator, and so study sessions and public hearings are a really good opportunity for that. And then you also have the opportunity as individuals to meet with groups, to hear them out, and then maybe that can inform your positioning as well. But through the end of the year, between housing element, general plan, ODS, and the other initiatives, I don't know that we'll have the bandwidth to facilitate something like that.
Yeah. No, I totally understand how busy we are. I'm just, do we know, just do we know when, what the timeline is for, the rough timeline for the objective design standards?
We're moving expeditiously, and we can... We're moving expeditiously, and we can provide more info on that on the 8th.
Okay, okay. Maybe.
So the answer is, as far as I can tell, we will be able to incorporate some of that in our packet for August the 8th, at least the letter as, as comments, right? And I think moving forward, and I can understand, we couldn't have specific study sessions for quite a while. And it sounds like for commissioners, we need to do some of our own work independently. And I know that's difficult because we could all have different opinions on what we hear and see. And I don't, I don't mean to leave you out there, but I think that's where we're at at this point.
Well, and I think the difficulty is that, you know, when we have a study session for a new project, you know, it's not that it's, it's not too late then, but it's a lot to, it's a lot to kind of cover in terms of, you know, broad design changes in terms of.
There's already a lot of time in, in design work that's invested by the time it gets to us.
Right.
And just being able to, I think the public and, you know, applicants would be better served if they had a better idea of what we're looking for in, in the interim. So I'm not sure where we get, how we get there.
Through the chair, I just want to be careful we don't.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Discussion right now.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for, I think, including it at that point, at that meeting.
I appreciate you bringing it up, Margaret. Any other concerns or comments this evening? And we'll close the meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you.